I know, it's like, where are you?
TJ's over there.
Yeah, I guess the Fall Festival.
I really don't know why it's so busy. And I'm surprised he's been sort of in, you know, weeks of proclamations, but...
I didn't expect him.
Well, I've been at CBA's.
I think they probably set up for inside hearing.
Oh. Sure. My mom. I gave attention to my mom.
Do you have, do they actually need pictures? Do they know?
They do.
It's nine o'clock. Yeah, it's nine o'clock.
If everybody starts settling down, it's nine o'clock in the morning.
We got CDBA's there.
Hello, we're getting started.
We gotta wait for Sarah, so.
I got that gobble. Sometimes it's handy.
I got my attention. Well, we're waiting for Sarah, so.
I wonder if they could.
For the Fall Festival and proclamations and stuff, we'll ask them to just step out of thing. If that's okay, well, I guess do the reorganization.
That'd be great.
Oh, the Fall Festival recognition, there we go. You want me to go ahead and ask? Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Before we get started, because I know we have a very full house today, if you are here for any of the Fall Festival recognition or proclamations that are taking place today, just so that we're able to maintain compliance with our fire codes, if you all wouldn't mind just stepping out of the room just while we do the reorganization part of the meeting, and then we'll bring everybody back in for the proclamation and presentation section.
And there's half the room.
Thank you so much.
That's way better.
Well, this is nice though.
Fall Festival recognition.
Yeah, that's a lot of recognition.
That's a loud group. It's a large group. That's awesome.
TJ's gonna have a clicker. Tiff, Mary's in the back, I don't know if you saw her. Yeah, she had the vaccine. That's funny. Yeah, she's always gonna have a little.
She's moving and she looks like she's in the heat.
No, she's no game, that's a big sign.
It doesn't matter if you're walking.
Uh huh.
Most people do, so you get a little older.
Exactly. No, I know, listen, I'm a big five-oh. It's another day at this point, really.
He's counting.
You know, and I kind of look down here.
Okay, are we getting ready now? We're good?
I really rode my bike.
Can you hear me?
And I see people walking.
Crap. Okay, fantastic. Okay, good morning. It is a little after nine now, Wednesday, November 19th, here at the Lashley Community Room. We're going to have a roll call.
Janine Polk.
Greg Julian.
Melissa Lockhart.
Janice Denton.
We're gonna do an implications.
Good morning. Before we pray this morning, I wanted to let you know we're eight days away from Thanksgiving, probably one of my favorite holidays. It's one of my favorite holidays because it's where family and friends can get together and talk about the blessings that God has given them. Before I pray at the Thanksgiving meal, we go around the table and we ask everyone, what are they thankful for? It's a great tradition to do. Another great tradition to do is to take old cell phones and put them all in a box someplace and never, ever talk about politics. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Creator of heaven and earth, you promised that you would never leave us or forsake us. We thank you. We thank you for that. As I woke this morning, I was reminded that you've brought us to the beginning of a new day and the beginning of a busy holiday season. Lord, we pray that we do not allow our lives to become so busy that we forget about you and all you have done for us. We ask that you renew our hearts with your strength and purpose. Forgive our errors of yesterday and help each one of us walk closer to you. Shine through us, Lord, so every person we meet may feel your presence in our soul. Lord, we ask that all the decisions made here today in this chamber be pleasing to you and the people of Punta Gorda. A verse from the Old Testament, the book of Joshua, chapter 24. "As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord," and all God's people said.
Amen.
Do I pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do ask that all our veterans please stay standing in the room so they can be recognized. Thank you for your service and our freedom. Does anybody have any announcements?
Yes. Jerry and I drove through Gilchrist Park last night, and it was all lit up and really beautiful, and thanks to the public works.
And also appreciating the beautiful wreaths lit up on our Marion Street. Thank you for public works for that.
I'm actually gonna ask if we can move six I to six B spot, if that's okay? We do have somebody here to talk about it. And that's the city street maintenance update. So we're just gonna move that up to six B. Is that okay?
Yes.
That's good.
Okay, fantastic. Our next meeting is gonna be December 3rd, here at the Lashley Community Room. It will be our last one for 2025. So we're gonna start with the council reorganization, the 2025 general election results.
Good morning, everyone. City Clerk Sarah Welch, for the record. For District 3, Deborah Lux was unopposed at the close of qualifying and thereby elected. For District 5, the Punta Gorda canvassing board certified election results on November 11th, 2025. Melissa Lockhart received 2,362 votes. William Page received 2,056 votes. Congratulations to Deborah Lux and Melissa Lockhart on your election. Now, could I please have the council members elected step forward for their oaths of office? Okay, I'm gonna read the oaths. At the end, you can just say that you swear or affirm. "I, Deborah Lux, I, Melissa Lockhart, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the State of Florida, that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council."
I swear. I swear.
Wonderful.
It might have a little pin on it.
Congratulations. Do you have, yes. Right, so if you would like to step forward with your mother? Do the pictures?
I have my mom with me today. My husband's still at work.
My wife Tiffany, nobody, no one's better yet.
Before we begin the election of mayor, I was asked to read the following rule council has agreed upon, Rule 47 of our new rules of procedure, election of officers. 47.1, nominations may be taken once the individual conducting the election, interim city attorney Leskovich, announces the floor is open for nominations and calls for same if none are immediately offered. 47.2, recognition by the chair is not required to make a nomination. 47.3, nominations do not require a second. 47.4, a member may nominate themselves. 47.5, after each nomination, the name is repeated to the assembly with a request for any further nominations. 47.6, a member may decline the nomination during the nominating process. 47.7, a motion to close nominations is not necessary if no further nominations are offered after three calls. In such a case, the person conducting the election can announce nominations are closed. 47.7.1, if only one nomination is made, that individual is elected to office by acclamation. 47.7.2, if more than one nomination is made, votes are taken by a show of hands with the individual receiving a majority of votes being elected to office. 47.8, the individual conducting the election should announce the result of the vote.
Good morning to you guys.
Good morning.
Presidents here. Did you guys catch all those rules and everything? The city charter and city organization requires an election of the mayor once every year by your city council members. With the powers that are instilled within your organizational documents, it is my responsibility to, at this time, open the floor for nominations for mayor for the city of Punta Gorda for the next 12 months. So each of you have an opportunity to nominate a fellow council member yourself. You do not have to do it by motion. But do we have, at this point, any nominations for mayor?
I nominate Greg Julian for mayor.
I nominate Debbie Lux for mayor.
Councilmember Lockhart has nominated Councilman Greg Julian. Janice Denton has nominated Debbie Lux. So far, we have two individuals. Do we have any other nominations? Going twice? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the nominations for mayor. By a show of hands, this is how we have to do this. If you are in favor of Councilman Julian to be your next mayor, please raise your hand. We have two votes. For those in favor of Councilwoman Lux being your next mayor, please raise your hand. And we have three votes. By acclamation of the powers vested within the city of Punta Gorda, Councilmember Lux, you have been elected mayor. Congratulations to you for the next 12 months. Madam Mayor, you have an opportunity to conduct the elections for vice mayor, or you can defer to me to do that as well. All right, let me finish the paperwork here for, for mayor. All right, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for vice mayor. Each of you have an opportunity to nominate yourself or a fellow council member. You can do it individually, or you can do it by motion. Do we have anyone nominating for vice mayor?
I nominate myself.
I nominate Janine Polk.
Councilmember Julian has nominated himself. Councilmember Denton has nominated Councilwoman Polk. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, at this time, for those in favor of Councilmember Julian being elected vice mayor, please raise your hand. We have two votes for Councilmember Julian. For those in favor of Councilwoman Polk, please raise your hand. We have three votes. Councilmember Polk, congratulations to you. By a vote of three to two, you are elected vice mayor. Madam Clerk, I have the records here for your.
Okay. Does everybody approve the agenda today?
Yes.
Yes.
Our first proclamation is gonna be the Fall Festival recognition by Sarah.
I think you gotta get everybody back in here.
We gotta get everybody back in, you're right. Sarah, I'm gonna have the rest of the proclamations step out, so we can bring Fall Fest in. Is that okay? Okay, so if anyone is here for G.I.S., Christmas Parade, and the Service Award, if you could just step out momentarily. Sorry.
They may wanna have all the people just stand up front while the proclamation is read and then walk back out. I don't understand why I have to sit.
Ms. Ashley, why don't you just have everybody for the proclamation for the Fall Festival just be right up here? That was a great idea by Janine.
She's counting people to make sure we're okay. Yeah, everybody, come on up. Come up to the front.
We want your faces, taking pictures.
Appreciate it. Thank you, it's all right.
I love it, this is, these are some spirited people. Make another row, yeah. You're gonna have to make another row.
Tiny ones in front, Teresa. You have to go in front, you're too tiny.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
You too, you too.
Morning, dear, how are you? Good to see you.
Are you part of this group? Are you part of this group? Good for you.
Morning.
Jenny.
What did you learn? In summary. They really feel better. Yeah, I mean, they really did. That sums up the whole, they're confusing. So then, if people wanna sue us, everybody's gonna get sued, and that's just not. We're gonna give them to everybody. But I don't think I should have did that. It is a bit ironic, though, that a lot of these things are the same on both sides. Give it this, me and my grandson, I don't even know who took it, though. If you're in the back, take yourself tall.
Hold on, don't go anywhere. Yeah, I would say so, that's awesome. Okay, so we're gonna do this a little bit differently, just because we had so many people come for the recognition, and I just wanna say that it was incredible for you all to show up and be together on the day of the Fall Festival, but to get so many people to come back a second time for the recognition is fantastic. So thank you all so much for being here. So I'm just gonna say a few words, and then we are gonna do what we came here to do, which is give thanks to all of the organizations and individuals who made Fall Festival possible. For those of you who don't know, my name is Jennifer Faulkner. I'm the deputy city clerk and helped organize the Fall Festival. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, I'm reminded how thankful I am for this wonderful community and how it showed up in force to make this year's Fall Festival a special success. Everywhere you looked, collaboration was on display, from free food generously sponsored by Winn-Dixie and the Leskovich Law Group, and prepared by city staff from the Fire Department and Code Compliance, and the Charlotte High School Interact Club volunteers, to incredible desserts from First Baptist Church Punta Gorda, and heartwarming family photos courtesy of Kalen's Farm Market and Feed Supply, and our own utilities director, Tom Spencer and his wife, Ariane, to a fun and creative costume contest, thanks to the Firm Advertising Agency and Jarrett Ford of Charlotte County, with prizes donated by numerous local businesses, and of course, the centerpiece of the festival, the trick-or-treat circuit that came to life thanks to dozens of nonprofits. The Fall Festival represents everything that is good about Punta Gorda. I'd like to share more details and give thanks to the people and organizations that made this possible. So, I know that we don't have representatives from every organization here, because we all have lives and lots of other things that are happening around this time of year, but if you are here from your organization, when I read your organization's name, if you'll just raise your hand so we can give you some recognition for that. And we'll do the certificates of appreciation afterwards outside, so that we don't take up the entire council meeting. All right, so for our trick-or-treat partners, we had the American Red Cross South Florida Region, the Animal, the Animal Welfare League, the Blanchard House Museum, I know we've got someone from Blanchard House here today, the Bread of Life Mission, CARE, the Center for Abuse and Rape Emergencies, the Charlotte Corral, I know I saw Charlotte Corral here, the Charlotte De Soto Building Industry Association, Charlotte County Human Services, the Charlotte Harbor Environmental Center, Community Care Plan of Charlotte County, the Florida Department of Health, Charlotte County, our Friends of the Punta Gorda Library, the Gilstad Literacy Foundation and Charlotte County Imagination Library, Habitat for Humanity, Charlotte County, Health Planning Council of Southwest Florida, the Kiwanis Club of Punta Gorda, the Lions Club of Punta Gorda, the League of United Latin American Citizens, Masonic Lodge, number 115, New Life in Christ Church, the Parrot Outreach Society, the Peace River Wildlife Center, the Punta Gorda Garden Club, the Punta Gorda Isle Civic Association, Southwest Honor Flight, Team Punta Gorda, Valerie's House, the Virginia B. Andes Community Clinic, the YMCA of Southwest Florida with the Y at the rec, the Rotary Club of Punta Gorda, the Charlotte County Branch of the NAACP, the Gator Wilderness Camp School, and the St. Vincent de Paul Society. To all of our trick-or-treat partners, you guys made an incredible circuit sharing resources and treats with the kids and their adults, so thank you so much for being part of this year's Fall Festival. We look forward to having you all next year. I do also wanna go ahead and thank our sponsors, because this event would not have been possible without their generous donations and contributions. Our buzz-worthy bite sponsors, which allowed us to provide a free meal to all who attended, was courtesy of the Leskovich Law Group, and our local Winn-Dixie Punta Gorda. And we'll give a small clap to my husband's knuckles, which burned while cooking hot dogs. Thank you. TJ. So, we'll, but thank you to TJ and fire staff as well for helping with the food. Then we also had an incredible costume contest with several categories, ranging from everything from a Starbucks baby to a techno ninja, techno ninja, and that was courtesy of our fright and delight sponsors, Jarrett Ford of Charlotte County, and the Firm Advertising Agency. and the Firm Advertising Agency. Then we also had a handful of Punta Gorda powerhouse sponsors. These sponsors gave generously to help us create event magic in everything, from the event decorations, to signage and marketing, to the recreation games that we had, so a big shout out to our powerhouse sponsors, Sunshine Art Studio here in Punta Gorda, Landsberg Bennett Private Wealth Management, the Southwest Florida YMCA, which doubled up as a sponsor and a trick-or-treat partner, so thank you again for the ride for that, Smooth Treats and More Italian Ice, Beltrane's Nursery and Landscaping, LeBeau Construction, Time Realty, Publix at Punta Gorda Crossing, our Punta Gorda Supercenter Walmart, New Life in Christ Church, and our local Beefo Brady's Punta Gorda. Then we also had several custom sponsors who helped us with particular magic at the event, so I would like to now thank those custom sponsors. Thank you to Nino's Bakery, who was a powerhouse sponsor and also donated cookies, hand-decorated cookies for the costume contest. Thank you to Lowe's of Port Charlotte, who donated the supplies to make our very cute photo cutout that we had at the event that was then constructed by our city's Right-of-Way Department and painted by our very misowned Laura Adelman in Public Works. And then a big thank you to the First Baptist Church Punta Gorda. They allowed us to use their parking lot for overflow parking and also created some of the most delicious desserts I have ever seen for the dessert walk, so thank you very much for sponsoring that event. A big thank you to the Parrot Magazine for donating ad space to advertise our event and let people know it was happening. Another thank you to the Friends of the Punta Gorda Library, who in addition to being a trick-or-treat partner, also donated funds for the arts and crafts supplies that the library did, the ghost adoption, which was super cute. Thank you also to the Escape Ventures Port Charlotte, who generously donated vouchers for escape rooms for our costume contest prize packs. Thank you to Iguanaland, who donated prizes for the costume contest, to Kalen's Feed and Farm Supply, who donated hay bales for our photo op area, Fiorini Broadcasting, WENG Radio and 104.5 Classic Country, who donated radio airtime for our event promotion. A big thank you to Modern Era Event Group, who donated their DJ services when they walked in to find out where to drop off their business tax receipt application, and I heard that they did DJ services, and I said, oh, how fun, we have an event on Saturday, would you like to come? So thank you for coming in and saving us. Thank you to Macaroni Kid Publication for donating media coverage for our event, to the Working Cow Creamery, who donated gift cards for our costume contest, and to Logan Light Magic and Amaze Games for donating a fabulous set of magician services that was a very popular event at the library, so thank you so much. And then, I promise, I'm on my last page. I did also want to read off and thank all of the City of Punta Gorda employees who helped put the Fall Festival together, plan it, set it up, break it down, and hand out candy, supervise the bounce house, I mean, anything you can think of, a City of Punta Gorda employee was there to help with it, so I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't recognize these folks for their help making the festival possible. They are in roughly alphabetical order, I think. Adriana Gurkey, Alexandra Friend, Alicia Oates, Andre Mobley, Angelina Coleman, Ashley Carney, Ben Feria, Brian Fuller, Charles Henderson, Chavis Rose, Chris Hall, Connie Hayes, Dana Stradly, Dave Myers, Delicia Damasso, Heather Giuliano, Chief Holden Gibbs, Holly Marecki, Jack Andrew, Jacob Rivera, Jason Cox, John Schnell, Josh Hayes, Justin Balla, Lieutenant Justin DeWolff, Kim Willis, Laurel Adelman, Wes Harris, Mark Struther, Mary Beth Leg, Matt Webb, Michael Androwski, Mike Robinson, Mel Watts, Nancy Magna, Nick Faulkner, Noah Carbajal, Odalis Valdez, Pablo Bernay, Chief Pam Smith, Paul Di Gregorio, Perry Turner, Ron Kawett, Steve Napier, TD Smith, Tom Spencer, Tony De Jesus, Troy Cruz, Tyler Panfield, Vince Machini, Will Peterson, and Wyatt Rose. Thank you guys so much for all of your help. Once again, thank you to the City Council and the City Manager's Office for giving us not only time today to recognize this fabulous community for putting together the Fall Festival, but for also supporting this event and helping us make it such a success this year. We look forward to next year. And thank you, last but absolutely not least, to our 2025 co-host, the Punta Gorda Charlotte Library, Jonathan Westbrook and Lizzley and their staff at the library for this event. It was a fabulous, fabulous event, as you can see, had a lot of heart, and we look forward to seeing everybody next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, that was awesome. Can't wait to do it again next year.
Thank goodness we're built a wall to tie it onto the bush there.
Yeah, that's where those voids came from.
I definitely appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I didn't see any rose tarys.
Yeah, I don't know how that came about, or.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could get a round of applause for the lady that put it all together, Jennifer Faulkner. Thanks so much, Jennifer. If you are with the city and you are involved in the GIS Award today in proclamation, would you please come up? We're probably not back in here yet. All right, will it affect anyone else, GIS?
Missy, you don't want them to stand in front, too?
We'll start at the side here. We have a, I'm Melissa Riker, City Manager. We have a proclamation from the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the City of Punta Gorda recognizes that an understanding use and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare and general public throughout Charlotte County and the surrounding areas, and whereas GIS technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond, and whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential, and whereas the City of Punta Gorda acknowledges those who have chosen GIS as their profession or part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens, and whereas the city is committed to utilizing GIS for more informed decision-making, to better serve our residents, and to make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim November 19th, 2025, as Geographic Information Systems Day, passed and duly adopted and regular session on this 19th day of November 2025. I want to thank everyone in the city that's involved in GIS. This has been the single most transformational investment that the city has made over the last 10 years, and we are really starting to see the results of it. Now, I will grab your formal certificate, and I'll turn it over to our GIS analyst, Mr. Todd House.
Thank you so much, Melissa, and thank you, Council, for recognizing today as GIS Day, and more importantly, recognizing and supporting GIS technologies throughout the city all through the year. I wanted to take a moment to recognize a few of our users. Over the last six, six-plus years, we've gone from about a handful, maybe 10 users of this technology, to getting close to 250, 250. It's really blossomed, and the only reason it's happened is because directors that are a lot of you are in here, and users have adopted the technology and brought it into their business processes throughout the city. Very thankful for that. I used to go out and recruit users and say, hey, you could use this for this, you could use this for this, and now we've got a GIS manager in Utilities, Kent Grubbs, Sam Updike, in Public Works, and then of course, IT, Alicia, most of you know, and Connie's here, Brad. None of this technology works without the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure behind it. You know, we find out when we have downtime like yesterday, that's important, too, so I wanted to recognize the IT department and also all of our users, a few of which are here, but I'm proud to say that we've gone into every single department in the city. Melissa is also a user, GIS user as well, with Story Maps for sure and other technologies, but we've reached every single department and usually a couple rows down into the Division Manager and the Supervisor levels. So just with that, I'd just say thank you very much, and we appreciate the recognition.
Good morning. It is with great pleasure that I would like to ask for Mr. White, the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce, to come up, and anybody else he may be with. Good morning, nice to see you. Good morning. Whereas the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce is devoted to enriching the vibrant business, civic and cultural aspects of Charlotte County, and whereas the magic of the Christmas season is brightened by the cherished tradition of the Chamber-sponsored Christmas Parade, a beloved event for our citizens and visitors alike, and whereas the 47th Annual Christmas Parade will begin its merry mark at 12 o'clock noon on Saturday, December 13th, 2025, and whereas this year's whimsical theme, Elf Village Celebration, promises a magical spectacle for all to enjoy, and whereas we are delighted to announce that the one and only Santa Claus himself will travel thousands of miles from the North Pole to attend this historic event in our beautiful city of Punta Gorda, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the 13th of December 2025 to be the Christmas Parade Day, and warmly encourages all residents, visitors, and families to gather along the parade route to share in the joy and wonder of this beloved community tradition passed and duly adopted this 19th day of November 2025.
Good morning, City Council.
Morning.
Bob White, Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce. I also have James Colwell here, who's our president of our Board of Directors, and I just wanted to thank you for this. This is truly like trifecta. Last week, we had an amazing event at the lighting of the village. December 5th, we will have the Christmas tree lighting, and then on the 13th, we'll have our 47th Annual Charlotte County Chamber of Christmas Parade. It's open to the entire community, whether you want to be and have an entry, you don't have to be a member of our organization, so if you wanted to bring in, decorate your golf cart, your boat, your horse, tractor, whatever you have, decorate it elf style. We only allow one Santa in the parade, and that's, he belongs to us. But again, there's three to 4,000 people that lie on the sidewalks between, we kick off at CPAC at noon, we come down Carmelita, down Taylor, and disband at the Event Center parking lot, so it's just a great community event. So again, thank you for this so much, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
We're going to do ribbon-cutting pictures.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Ron Everts, Public Works Director. This opportunity this morning is one of my favorite things to do, to recognize the people of my department and share with everybody a little bit about them and what they do for the city. I had to write it all down, though, because Dave's got quite a story, so forgive me for reading it off paper. Today, we recognize an extraordinary milestone, 35 years of dedicated service to the City of Punta Gorda by David Myers. Dave began his career in the city on September 23rd, 1990, after serving in the United States Navy and continuing as a naval reservist through much of his time working here at the city. His public service extends both through the military and the municipal fronts, a rare and honorable dual commitment. He started at the ground level, literally, as a Worker One in the Right-of-Way Division, and through sheer dedication, initiative, perseverance, rose through the ranks to Crew Chief, Drainage Crew Lead, Traffic Signal Maintenance, Safety Coordinator, and ultimately our Right-of-Way Supervisor. Dave has done it all, from field work to leadership, and embodies what it means to grow a career here in public service through integrity and hard work. During his 35 years, Dave has balanced deployments across the globe, Panama, Spain, Italy, England, Japan, the Netherlands, Kuwait, Iraq, Afghanistan, and he served as Seabees in the Construction Battalion, deployed three times to the Persian Gulf after 9/11, where he worked as an accident coordinator, investigating incidents across multiple countries. His service earned the respect of his military peers and his colleagues here at home. Back in Punta Gorda, Dave was instrumental in the city of Right-of-Way Operations. Known for his steady leadership, deep institutional knowledge, he's particularly proud of the times when he and his crew were able to do projects that really mattered, restoring the city brick streets, and other projects that required craftsmanship, teamwork, and pride. The kind of work that lasts generations for all to enjoy. He also lived through the hard years, most notably during the COVID-19, when his team was reduced to just three employees. Despite that, he kept operations running, embodying the very definition of mission first. Throughout his career, Dave has maintained a belief, worth repeating here today, that the City of Punta Gorda is one team, not a collection of departments. He has always emphasized collaboration between divisions and departments, Public Works, Utilities, and everyone in City Hall, all succeeding together or not at all. That's the kind of thinking that builds an organization that lasts. Dave's commitment has not gone unnoticed. During one of his military deployments, a former City Council member, himself a veteran, stepped up to ensure that Dave's job and benefits were protected. That action reflected the respect Dave earned from this organization and from the city in whole, and the service to his nation. Today, Dave and his wife Kathy and Today, Dave and his wife Kathy enjoy a big family. They have five children, 15 grandchildren, and currently, they have two dogs, Finley and Gracie, which Dave proudly says are the best kids they've ever had. And if you've ever worked with Dave, you know his humor and humility are as much a part of his leadership as his technical skills. Dave has said many times that the city has been good to him, but the truth is, the city is better because of him. His story represents best what is best about municipal service, starting from the bottom, showing up every day, serving with pride, and leaving every street, sidewalk, and signal better than he found it. Dave, on behalf of City Council, the City Manager, and the entire organization, thank you for your 35 years of honorable service to the city of Ponte Gorda and for representing what it truly means to be part of this harborside hometown family. Congratulations.
I don't know what I have to talk about. I'm going to sit it off.
35 years, that's impressive. Now, we're going to go on to public input. Those wishing to introduce themselves as nominees for a board committee may do so at this time. Those who choose to speak, please state your name for the record. This is for a board or committee. Second time for a board or committee. One last time, board or committee.
Let me get somebody back there.
Come on up to the podium. State your name, please.
My name's Garrett Kaiser. I am up for reconsideration to be back on the Building Board Committee this year. I currently serve as the Chair of that board. I do have interest in continuing my role in that capacity, so I just wanted to introduce myself and answer any questions and be sworn in if I need to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Do I have to do it three times? Okay, next. Anyone wishing to address the council on any matter must state their name for the record. Each person will be allowed to speak up to a maximum of three minutes. Please be kind. This is everybody in the room, and remember Thanksgiving.
Okay, Cindy O'Hara, PGI. Greg, yes, the adults love the lit-up park, but when I rode by there last night at 6:00 PM after my grandson in first grade has had his drum lesson, he wanted to play at the park, and it was already dark. There were about four families there with their children playing in the dark, which you're not supposed to be there after dusk. We weren't going to violate the ordinance, so we didn't go, but, you know, I said, he started complaining, and I said, well, this might be a matter to take before the council. So, because he's in school today, I recorded what my grandson had to say, and I'm going to play it to you right now, which I thought was kind of cute. Let me turn up my volume. Oops, sorry, hold on. I got my airplane mode on because of the not wanting phone calls. Oops. Okay, let's see if this does it. Oops, here we go.
Good morning, town school members. There's a slight problem. There's no lights at Gilcrest Park, and I really want to play there after dinner, and I really like that place a lot. And can you please add lights there so I can play there after dinner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, anyway, I just thought I'd share that with you if I can get this off now. And, okay, anyway, to lighten up things, congratulations, Melissa. Congratulations, Janine. I do have some concerns here, you know, there's division on this board, there's no doubt. I've been watching it for a year, and that's a problem. I have serious concerns. I've been here 28 years. I've voiced those concerns over and over again. I have been targeted for 28 years here, 28 years because of my abilities, my education, the things that I have to offer, and from, because I'm a Christian, a Republican, a Conservative, and coming from a wealthy family. 28 years of being targeted, and it's still going on. I'm still reporting incidences every day, every time I go out. I am stalked by lawyers. Lawyers are taking advantage of their ability to spy on people. They can get anybody they want, and they don't have to be a registered private investigator to spy on any of us. Judges do it, too, to determine how they're going to go with the case. This has been going on for almost three decades here that I'm aware of, and probably long before that. It's really bad, and they have literally robbed, stolen, terrorized my life for 28 years, isolated me, and deprived me of all kinds of good things that I could have done. They cut you off as soon as you get here. They make sure that you can't volunteer, they don't want you to become popular, they terrorize and haunt you when you go to do things for the kids or whatever. And I tried to talk to one of the board members here, and we're going to exclude the male, okay, it was a female board member, who was hanging out, had plenty of time, nobody around, and tried to explain some of the things that have happened to me, and this person kept, listened for a little bit, and then tried to push me to move on repeatedly, four or five times, maybe even six. That was an insult. That was an insult. That's like saying, I don't want to know anything about the bad stuff going on here. I don't want to know anything about the criminal things that are happening in this town. You know, that is really a big insult. Then I had a police officer just now tell me, maybe I should get out of this community. Maybe it's, I'd go somewhere else if you don't like it here. Who said I didn't like it here? I love it here. And guess what? Those people are going to prison. There's been an investigation here for 21 years since, 24 years since 9/11 pilots were trained here.
Anybody else want to speak?
It's nice to see you all. It's been a while.
State your name, Tim.
Tim Ritchie. It's really nice getting to sit next to Janice. What, what, just a joy. People ask me, you know, how does this happen, Tim, with the water? So, I want to share this with all of you. This is very important. This here is the Mosaic Barto South Jip Stack. This is Alfal D002. Every day, up to 27 million gallons of blended acidic wastewater is discharged to an unnamed creek, and then it goes down, this green dotted line is called Six Mile Creek, and then it discharges into the Peace River. From the same place, Alfal D001 goes into Neese Appleling Creek, and then into the north Prong Alphaya River. So, Tampa Bay, Charlotte Harbor, they use the Alphaya, Little Manatee, Manatee, Myacabe Peace River. Now, I just find it crazy that we're in Phase 1 water shortage. Who issues water use permits? Swift Mud. I was up there, I, any one of you want to drive with me up on the next meeting? I'll take you to Brooksville. We leave very early, about 6:30 AM. I'll come pick you up. But I was fighting with them because they wanted to renew a permit for Mosaic, which they use 70 million gallons per day. Right now, Polk Water Authority is fighting with Hillsborough Water Authority. I want you all to understand, we have a serious water problem. People think we have a ton of water. We do not have a ton of water. Let me tell you, I've been saying you this message for seven and a half years, and if your father was my father, one of the top management consultants in the world during the 60s, 70s, and 80s, you'd understand. Last time I was here, I asked you for $100,000 to be put into a fund, and we're going to address that. I will be sending you an email about it, because you know what? I have to go see the laboratory on the first, and I have to go pick up some, a couple printouts. I have to also drop off some samples, but I just want to tell you, three water tests were $560. I have a relationship. Thank you. We need to save the river. It's in bad shape, folks.
No, yeah, there's one for everyone, including Sarah. My name's Bill Page. I'm the Burn Store Isles President, and I've been asked to read a statement by one of my members, members of council. It's been brought to my attention that my name has been mentioned at a recent public meeting. The meeting was regarding the controversial boat canopy proposal and debate. I am told I was given time to speak before the council. Unfortunately, I was unaware I would be invited to speak. Due to my current work schedule, I have not been able to attend the latest meetings and have not gotten into the debate of the canopies. I do, however, appreciate any council. I do not, however, appreciate any council member speaking for me unless authorized to speak for me. I am told Councilman Greg Julian has stated publicly that I was against the proposal. I have not spoken to Mr. Julian, nor have I met him, much less given my opinion or the opinion of my organization. I am currently the Commodore of the Burn Store Isles Boat Club. My words and opinions have weight among my members and fellow residents, and those words and opinions should be mine only. Now, there is nothing that can be done, as large public comments meetings has taken place, and comments cannot be recanted, but I would ask Councilman Julian for an apology for inserting my opinion without my consent, and in the future, to verify thoughts and opinions before publicly announcing any thoughts of matters before the council for public record. I will make myself available in the future to attend public meetings once my work schedule allows it. I would state, however, that I am always available to my members and members of council through the Burn Store Isles Boat Club and for any concerns or recommendations for the voting community in which I serve. Sincerely, William Moran, Commodore, Burn Store Isles Boat Club.
Hello, my name's Debbie Coudray, and I was just wondering if we'd make a decision on something that might happen in the future, and how Michigan, they have an AI center that uses millions of gallons of water, and I was wondering if that's something that we should consider ahead of time, to reserve our land, not go that direction, but thank you for your time.
Jeffrey, coming up? No? Anybody else want to come up and speak? Second time, anybody else coming up? One last time. Okay. We're not.
Your three minutes are up.
Three minutes are up. Okay, the next public hearing will be the Ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda repealing Chapter 17.
Mayor, may I ask something? At the last meeting, I think we kind of talked about if we were going to change spots on how people sit so it's easier to kind of see. I didn't know if that's something that you want to do, or what are your thoughts around that? Because I think we're going to switch seats, because I'm a leaner, so, I didn't know.
I had just suggested that I would have, during the break after the December 3 meeting, I would play, kind of test some configurations with city staff to see who could see where, and then have a recommendation for you, ready for that, set for that January meeting.
We're just going to switch.
We're in agreement, though.
I'm a leaner, so we're just going to switch real quick. Give me one second.
You need gigs.
Oh, yeah. Trade you.
I know I showered today, Melissa. An Ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida repealing Chapter 17, Utilities of the Code of Ordinances in its entirety and adopting a new Chapter 17, Utilities, providing for the regulation, operation, and administration of the city's water, wastewater, and reclaimed water systems, providing for conflicts and severability, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading.
Tom and Kristen, did you have anything to say on this?
Good morning. Tom Spencer, Utilities Director, for the record.
Mr. Spencer, hold on a minute.
He was asking if we need to be sworn in.
Yes, because it's still a quasi judicial, so they still have.
This one shouldn't have to have.
Well, when resident, or when the public wants to speak, they have to.
Not legislative.
This is legislative, yes, okay.
Only if council has any questions, I can answer any questions, and we have our consultant with us here as well, if you have any questions about the ordinance or the changes in the ordinance. Otherwise, I'd like to thank everybody for all of your input and hard work that everybody has contributed towards us. It's been a huge undertaking, and it definitely modernizes our Chapter 17 Utilities Ordinances, gives us some tools to protect our resources and serve the community for the future.
I had one question. A citizen had brought up before, and I know, I think you said you're looking into it, and if it's in here, I apologize, I didn't see it, but like a fire sprinkler suppression system for different, we had talked about that before.
The charges for the fire service?
Yeah, so in other words, if a fire sprink, you know, the sprinklers went off as far as the water usage for that.
I will have to get back to you. I do believe that we had made provision for that. I know that the rates will be adopted separately, and that is something that we can update and add if need be.
Wonderful, thank you.
Kristen Sumyom, Finance Director. Just so you know, the resolution for the fee, since they're being pulled out of the ordinance, will be on the next agenda.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve 3A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, motion by Greg, second by Melissa. Council, we have no discussion here, we have to have it open to the public. I have it written down to do that, too. So, anybody in the public want to come speak on this? Tim, do you want to come up here? If you need to say something. So, second time, this is open to the public. Anybody want to say something?
How do I find?
State your name, please.
Tim Ritchie, City of Ponte Gorda.
I tried to find the agenda online, and I couldn't find it when I went to look for it. So...
I can respond to that. It is under City Council, and then agenda, you scroll down just a little bit in agendas and meetings. So just click the City Council tab, agendas and meetings.
Okay, well, let's just seem lost and confused, even though I am. What is this exactly about, this? What are we, what are we talking about right now? Can you tell me?
Tom Spencer again, utilities director. This is the update to the Chapter 17 Code of Ordinances for Utilities.
Oh, boy, okay. Are there anything in there that has to do with the water, obviously?
Plenty.
All right, I wish I had gotten to read this. Thank you.
This is the first reading, though, right? This is the first, the first reading. So you'll have an opportunity.
So it's still open to the public? Any comments?
That doesn't give all the details, but this should have.
Second?
This is the first reading, but this is the first reading after the public workshop and several discussions and meetings.
You coming up to speak?
Yep.
No? Okay. Third time, one last time.
Gary Skilicorn. I think you were looking for some recognition from the attendees today, so I will supply that. I'm very supportive of the revisions that have been identified. Certainly, it's for a cause that has built up over the years as far as the ability to maintain and extend our water and sewer system. So it's a necessary evil. It's finally caught up with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, one last time. Anybody else who would like to come up? No?
Move to close.
Second?
Second, that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No discussion on this? Okay, if you want to do your motion.
I move to approve 3A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to 4A. No public hearing required.
Did you want to read it by title?
Do you want me to read them, or are you?
Oh, I just have a question.
Which way you want to do it?
If you could read it.
A resolution of the City Council of the city of Ponte Gorda, Florida, establishing the schedule of regular city council meetings for 2026.
So we do have a slate of meeting dates that are proposed in the resolution. Is there any discussion of changing the proposed dates?
I just have a couple questions. So it looks like towards the end, instead of the first and the third, we're on a different schedule?
Yes, it has been changed for certain months.
And what is the reasoning for that?
Holidays. I think it was holidays.
Holidays, and to try and ensure that for most of the weeks, we have at least two full weeks in between the council meetings.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're consistent. You know, council's always been first and third. I know sometimes we've had to make some changes, but I don't want to confuse the public. Another thing, too, is I know that this meeting was actually, was tried to be changed. I think unless we don't have a quorum, our meetings should not be changed. You know, if a council member needs to miss, obviously, that's perfectly fine. But I don't think, and I just want to make sure on the record, that I am not in favor of changing council meetings if one council member has a conflict. It should only be if for some reason we can't have a quorum. But the more consistency, the better, because I know I've had a lot of people confused this year, because we have had to change some things, so.
I think on here also, it still says November 11th, but it's actually November 12th. I know Dr. Rickard talked about that, so just verifying with everybody that it's November 12th, not November 11th.
Right, it was changed.
It's changed in the printed resolution.
It's here, yep.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve 4A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
All right, we will advertise the approved dates in the newspaper and update the city calendars.
The only thing that I was going to ask is that we have some sort of a poll, just on the city's website, to consider if any of these should be an evening meeting to help with any residents who want to be here in the evening. It was just a suggestion, it's...
Staff has no objection to doing a poll. I think maybe a better way of doing things, though, would be to look at what the particular agenda items are, and if there are ones. You had mentioned in a previous meeting that they could potentially be pertaining to business, business owners may prefer to meet in the evening. Those types of agenda items, maybe we then do an evening meeting as needed, as those kind of items come up, rather than prescribing a certain number of meetings, but making it topic-based.
Perfect. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. It isn't, we don't have public comment, can you wait until the end of the meeting? Thanks, Joe.
Moving on to 4B. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Ponte Gorda, Florida reaffirming Resolution 1132-95 and formally adopting its rules of conduct and providing an effective date.
So the rules are: respect each person, share responsibility, criticize only ideas, not people, keep an open mind, question and participate, attend all meetings, and listen constructively. These rules have been reaffirmed annually since 2019 to demonstrate council's dedication to cooperation and positive relationships. Are there any questions?
No questions, all approve 4B.
Second, that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Moving on to 4C. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Ponte Gorda, Florida reaffirming its policy with regard to taking action on non-agenda items, providing for consideration of non-agenda items only after approval by the majority plus one of a quorum of council, and to do so only for stated reasons and providing an effective date.
So this policy has also been reaffirmed annually since 2019 to prohibit action on items which have not been included on an agenda. There is an allowance for items of an emergency nature to be acted upon and for items related to an agenda item which should properly be considered at the same time. The exceptions do require approval by a majority plus one vote of a quorum of the council to add an item to the agenda. Are there any questions regarding this one?
No.
No?
Motion to approve 4C.
Second, that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Moving on to 4D. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Ponte Gorda, Florida, formally adopting rules of procedure for city council and its boards and committees, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So the proposed rules of procedure have incorporated all suggested amendments to date. This document is expected to be a living document and is available to be updated anytime there's a need to do so. I would like to begin presenting it annually for review as well during council's reorganization meeting to ensure it continues to reflect current practices and meet council's needs. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No questions.
Move to approve 4D. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. Do you want to discuss it?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So, okay, take a 10-minute break here?
Sure. Sure. Sure.[1166.33]
Just remind me again for the city person to come back up again. I'm a leader.
I mean, it's been a few months, but you know what?
Variety's a spice of life, Stephen. Variety's a spice of life.
I know, huh? I mean, you could probably just potentially move the tables a little bit.
They're going to have to reconfigure it. Okay, we're going to start over your agenda, please.
I asked him to try. We're in session.
Okay, our next on the agenda is Florida Power and Light Street. It's a conversation, a conversion opportunity. Is that Ron coming?
Mr. Everts.
I'm sorry, Council, I was juggling a few things. Ron Everts, Public Works. Recently, the city manager and myself had the pleasure of meeting with FPL to discuss the conversion of the streetlights in our town from the high-pressure sodium down to the LED. It's got a lot of benefits, and I've got Eric Culling here. He's the senior representative for LED lighting solutions for FPL. And he's got a small presentation. He's going to provide some information for yourselves and citizens, and then he'll be able to field any questions you may have. Thank you.
As Ron mentioned, Eric Culling, FPL LED Lighting Solutions. Thank everybody for allowing the opportunity here this morning to talk about the benefits of converting over from the high-pressure sodium to LED. Thank you, Ron. It's been a pleasure working with him, determining, you know, what would be the best path forward for the city. Within the benefits summary that had been provided, there's four kind of key bullet points to the opportunity for the city to transition over to the LED street lighting. One to clarify is regarding the conversion, this would be for approximately 1,500 lights throughout the city, which are FPL-owned and maintained. They're primarily on our distribution facilities, such as the wood and concrete facilities, which have power delivery, distribution overhead. There's also some standalone street lighting poles dedicated to those facilities. Might be, okay. Want to clarify that any metal poles would not be part of this. That's part of an energy-only program. Also, any of the decorative units are also not part of the fully-maintained FPL units as part of this discussion. Kind of the first benefit for the city would be a cost perspective. I'm feeding back somewhere. Is that? I think they got it. Thank you very much. The first would be a cost benefit to the city. There is no cost upfront for the conversion opportunity, and there would be a monthly reduction within the costs for the LT-1 rate through the LEDs. From a safety and security standpoint, the current high-pressure sodium, as I'm certain you're aware, is it's a legacy technology that's been out for decades. From a color rendering index, you see kind of everything has that orange hue or cast to it. The updated LEDs, which we've worked again with staff to identify what would be an equivalency replacement within an LED, so it's going to be a warmer color temperature, but what it will allow is it has a high color rendering index, and that is going to allow better identification of color. So grass is going to be green, a white car would actually be white, and that can help law enforcement identify potential activity. Kind of a third bullet point is the benefits summary is a resiliency aspect for the LED fixtures. What we found from our restoration department, as we've unfortunately experienced over the past couple of years, very significant weather events, the LED fixtures are holding up better than the legacy high-pressure sodium units. So there's a resiliency aspect to keep the lights maintained. The fourth, obviously looking at a reduction in wattage, there is, you know, less energy consumption, which in turn provides a sustainability aspect to the overall project. Open up to questions that can help answer, if any.
Anybody have any questions? Would you talk about the benefit of dark, the dark sky?
Certainly. So with the LED Cobra Heads, which is kind of what that traditional roadway fixture is, it does have a bug rating with an uplight rating of zero. And again, we've looked at a 3,000 Kelvin color temperature, which is the advisory of the International Dark Sky Association. Any other questions for Eric?
I like the thought, the thought that you're also talking about with the Neighborhood Streets Underground Program. Do you want to say anything about that?
And Eric, also, if you could explain a little bit of the path forward, how we move forward from here. So with regards to power delivery undergrounding, we've got Charlotte Miller here with me today, and I'll defer to Charlotte to address that subject.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. Charlotte Miller with FPL External Affairs. FPL does have a couple of different undergrounding programs. One is called our Storm Secure Underground Program, where we identify feeders, which are some of the main lines coming in that may not be performing as well as some of our other feeders. Obviously, a high level of reliability is very important to us. So we identify those feeders, and sometimes it can be vegetation or various issues. And we move forward with undergrounding that with, with no cost to the customer. Long-term, our goal is to underground as much as possible throughout our service territory. Obviously, that is a very long-term initiative, and will take years to do. So in addition to that, if there is an area where the city or neighborhood would like to be undergrounded, but they really aren't having a lot of high-reliability programs, FPL does have a program for that. There is a cost to the customer. So what we would do would be meet with whoever's appropriate, get the parameters, streets, the boundaries, and then provide a ballpark estimate. With cities and counties that determine that they want to go forward with that, the cost does need to be paid upfront. So often, it's not required, but often the payment will be through an MSBU or MSTU mechanism. So if you're interested in any areas that you'd like information on, feel free to let us know. I'd be glad to work with you on it. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
I believe Ron had a quick follow-up for me regarding what an implementation would look like and what moving forward would look like. So we've put forth, and Ron and I have reviewed it, there would be an agreement that transitions from the current SL-1 rate that the city's under over to the LT-1 tariff rate. Once we would receive that agreement executed, we would go through what is our final design process, creating the jobs or WRs for the project. I had looked this morning. Based on, let's say, an agreement received by December 1st, we would look for full completion of the project by June 1st, with implementation starting approximately in March. Our contractors could install roughly 35 fixtures per day.
Wonderful, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Thank you so much.
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Do we need to make a decision on an agreement? I'd like to make a motion to provide an agreement with FPL for this process.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second to report with this? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for coming in. Now, removing six I, City Streets Maintenance Update. We're going to do that one next.
One moment, I've left my glasses back there.
So, good morning, everyone. So I'm here to give an update on where our pavement maintenance program stands. Couple things before I get started. I did set a brochure up there for everyone, an advertisement. That is from our current vendor that supplies that product. I have a representative from Pavement Technology here, in case some questions come up that I may not be able to answer about that product. We've been using that product for, since at least 2006 on our streets. We may not be maximizing its potential based on the way we've been utilizing it, but it has been utilized. All right, now we have it. So I guess where I left off is we've been using that product for some time. I also want to give a little bit of a background, so you may not ask so many questions of how we got to where we're at. When we started to establish our last streets that we were going to pave, historically, we'd just been take, essentially taking the oldest streets, and those were, that would become our paving program, the oldest streets. But as we were putting that program together, we realized that's not necessarily the worst streets that we have out there. So we started looking at our streets. The last program, we kind of just did a visual, tried to include some of those streets that we knew were worse off than the older streets. And then from there, we worked our way into having a pavement evaluation done on our streets to put everything into perspective and understand where everything, everything sat. So, so just a little more background, asphalt streets, that's our, our primary streets, brick streets being the second, and then there's just a few other miscellaneous categories here and there, alleys, concrete, maybe, like your bridges, just minor, minor type things. We contracted with a, so we contracted with a company called IMS. That stands for Infrastructure Management Services. And they came in and evaluated our, all of our asphalt streets. So you might wonder how they do that. They have this van here with all kinds of sensors and measuring devices, GPS, and they just gather that data as they drive along. They can essentially drive the speed on it and just collect all that data as they ride. It's, it collects just cracks, imperfections in the asphalt. It's also sensing how the vehicle rides as it goes along to establish a, a riding condition for the street. After all that's done, of course, it has to be processed, so they'll, they'll take that back, and as they post-process it with their software, they'll, they'll run through some quality, quality control on that through the software, doing various checks. They'll also, they have also a team that looks at all the data and tries to find any issues that arise, and then they have an engineering staff that also looks at that. They do send that to us, the city, and we review it also to try to identify things, and we did pick up on a few things through that process. So these are just a number of things, like their samples that they're looking for, different categories whenever they're doing this evaluation. You've probably seen a number of those things, those, those type of crackings, patches, obviously, that bottom left went on the left side, that bleeding, that was some of the issues that we had with our recent streets that were paved that we had to redo. Once they, once they analyze all that data, then we receive a report, a little over 100 pages, a report, has all the tables in it.
It's that that establishes.
So the report, what we're basically looking for is there's a composite number. It's called the Pavement Condition Index, and the city, the city did really well. Our overall pavement condition index says 89. And when you're, when you're looking at this, it isn't until you start getting into the 50s and 60 range that you really need to, that you're really doing a lot to the streets. It's just kind of regular maintenance-type things up to then. When you start getting 50 to 60, and even the 40 to 50, that's when you're milling and repaving the streets, so. Done a very good job of maintaining their streets.
So with that, with such a high rating, you might be wondering where we're going, so.
There's still things to be done. We're going to, there's going to be limited milling. We know there are some streets that we need to address. Indian Springs Cemetery is one that we're, we're looking at heavily.
Probably because it has some issues. That one will probably.
Need some full-depth restoration in places. Is that better? So that's one of the, one of the ones. Also, we're going to increase our use of the rejuvenator for the asphalt streets. We've been using that in the past. Typically, after we pave the streets, we've come back and applied the rejuven, we applied the rejuvenator to those streets. It's kind of, historically, I'd say it's more of the residuals that was left after the paving program. We used, used that money to apply what, to what streets we could. That product, if we were to use it properly, every five years, we should be applying that to the, to the streets. We'll also be doing our normal pothole repair. And another focus of ours is to improve some of our brick streets, which some are in not such good condition. Two that come to mind that are, that are on our radar right now are, is Gil between Marion and Reta. That one has some utilities issues under it. And then the other one is Palm between McGregor and Gil, the last section of that one. Those are, those are two that we want to focus on getting done. We're also cognizant, we know we're doing the downtown study, and we, we want to try to blend that with anything that's going on there. So that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if you have any more questions. I can tell you some, some quick numbers. The rejuvenator is about, based on some calculations I did, about 8% of the cost of paving of the street, so it's, it's much cheaper. And in talking to pavement technology, there's been some studies that indicate that up to seven years of life increase on the streets. They, they kind of touted as five, but things have shown that it may go a little bit further than that. So that's kind of where we're at, just a, just a quick update. If anyone has any questions.
Janine Polk for the record. So does the rejuvenator, can it, can it be used on the brick streets, or we don't, we don't use that on?
No, that's just for the asphalt streets. Malentines, I do not know a whole lot about it, but there's chemicals in the asphalt that, that reactivates and, and keeps the flexibility and such in the asphalt to the extent, and it helps hold the aggregates there, just the pavement holds together better and extends its life.
I know that there's just a few alleys that are left here that need something to be done, even if, you know, we don't pave them. I think that there's a couple of streets that it's like the front of their house that is an alley. Are we looking to do anything with that, you know, because we're talking about paving and stuff like that, so maybe we should consider paving at least the streets that have the house, you know, the entrance and the front.
Ron, do you want to speak to that, or?
Ron Everts, Public Works Director. I'm aware of the alleyways that you're speaking of. We have done some improvements. We've done a concrete apron at the intersection of Berry and the Tribute Alleyway, which was an important step in maintaining that front edge from eroding off. We're maintaining that consistently right now with backblading with the front end loader until we have the opportunity to lay down millings. So part of the last paving program, we retained a large portion of the millings, and so we're going to be using those over the next several years to do improvements on the alleyways on both the east and west sides.
Perfect, that's great. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Any motion?
Are we keeping it six I? And does there need to be a motion for this?
Yes.
Motion to approve six I, City Streets Maintenance Update. This is in here, no action required for informational purposes only.
Right.
Just say, yeah, so we don't need a motion. Information only. Correct.
Okay, we don't need one. Okay, next on the list is notice of termination lease Punta Gorda Coffee and Tea and Punta Gorda Chocolate and Wine.
As was included in your packet, I received a notice on 10/30 of 2025 of the notice to terminate the lease for Punta Gorda Chocolate and Wine and Punta Gorda Coffee and Tea and Haley Handcrafted Chocolates. Attorney Luskovich has reviewed the leases and is familiar with the situation, and we do have the tenants here, so I will, if it's okay with. if it's okay with you, ma'am, I'll let the tenants check. Go ahead.
We respectfully ask to be terminated from our lease.
Before any discussion, do you mind if I go ahead and bring up my, I'm going to abstain from, um, voting today on this situation. My son is the contractor on the new, uh, building, so it wouldn't be appropriate for me, I believe. So I did fill out the proper paperwork and I will be abstaining today from any vote.
You are permitted to abstain from voting. You've disclosed pursuant to Florida statute 112.3143, which is the procedure that's to be done, but nothing precludes you from discussing or opining during the discussion.
Thank you.
And it was Form 8B is what you filled out already?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you tell us your opinion?
Yes, Michael.
So I guess my first question. Are you Stephen and Patricia?
I'm Stefan.
Stefan, I'm sorry.
This is Patty.
Patty, okay. You guys put in your notice for termination of a lease that the reason for the termination is in accordance with the mutual agreement with the city of Punta Gorda. So what was the mutual agreement you guys had back in March of this year?
Well, we had a letter that we sent in in March in regards to, uh, everything that had happened in the past and the fact that we can't protect ourselves in our current location. Through the flooding. Um, so we, what happened is, um, and we, and we simply can't risk going through that again. So we will be, continue to serve Punta Gorda with the warmth and constancy and passion that we have the past decade. But we will be doing it from a more elevated location.
Which is understandable, but I'm just trying to figure out what the agreement was. Was it just you guys sending in a letter to the city saying we are, here's some of, some issues we have?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no, nothing written, nothing?
Nothing written.
No agreement, no, nothing signed, terminating?
Nothing signed.
No formal.
So if I'm understanding your letter correctly, then you're asking to terminate your lease early?
Yes.
And not be responsible for any remaining payments that may be due on the lease. Okay. And if I'm understanding correctly, Punta Gorda Coffee and Tea, your lease for unit 118 is due to expire August 31st of next year?
26.
26. And then Punta Gorda Chocolate and Wine is due to expire May 31st of next year?
April or May.
April or May, yes.
April or May, somewhere in there?
Yes.
So in my, so, so, so council is aware in reviewing the contracts, they, it's entirely up to you guys what you do. It's the legal opinion that they would still be on the hook and still liable for the rental payments moving forward between December 1st and whatever their contract's terminated, whether it's April or May, whether it's August of next year, for the rent that they are supposed to be paying. So legally, I think the city could still enforce upon them their rental obligations. But it is certainly entirely up to you if you guys allow them to get out of their lease early without financial repercussions.
And you're basing that on the way the lease was written, or?
Based on the way the lease is written, yes.
And in that lease, it didn't have a, you know, provision for a, a notice or an out or anything of that nature?
Correct.
If I may please, we are asking to be released here. We just financially cannot go through another devastation like we did. Um, we are so loyal to Punta Gorda and have loved being in Punta Gorda. And we will continue to be in Punta Gorda and serve for Punta Gorda. Um, we have worked really hard and tried very hard to stay in this location that we're at. We are not confident that if we stayed and another hurricane came through that we would be protected, that the business would be protected. We are afraid of that. And if something did happen, we would be done. We would be completely done. So we are asking for the forgiveness. We are asking for your assistance and we are pledging that we are still here in Punta Gorda. We will maintain in Punta Gorda. We love this area and we're sorry.
And our understanding is that the precedent has already been set with Gortables?
That was going to be my comment. I believe we've already set that precedent. They've already been through enough. They're going to remain in the community and, and be good community partners. And I, I think we can probably see fit to allow them to terminate without having to pay the additional.
So the city already paid almost $55,000 towards repair that we didn't, the city did not have to do, but they applied it. I believe that the city also was very aggressive in paying for tiger dams to protect that area. So I do see that the city has protected that area. The biggest thing that I have is a lease is a lease, and I've had leases like this before, and I've had to find somebody to take my lease for me, so I can no longer need it to be obligated. Have you tried to look for anybody to take that lease for you, to sublease it?
We have not as far as sublease. My understanding from previous council meetings is that the city themselves were looking to take over these locations. So that was back to the city. In previous council meetings, there have been conversations in regards to city taking over these locations for this building, that they would have to get a lesser rent.
Discussion.
Yes, yes. So we have not looked at doing subleasing.
Yeah, it's a, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, it's a difficult situation because we represent the taxpayers who already did put out a lot of money to repair these places and forgiveness of months of rent, which is, we needed to do that to help you guys. But now we're, um, having to give up potentially more rent. And I don't, I don't really think it's fair for the taxpayers, but however, I could see us putting on the website that this place is available immediately. You, you've made it nice. It's a, it's a beautiful location. So, um, I can see someone taking over your rent and, and trying to make that as, as quick as possible, taking over your lease. But I, I don't quite feel right about the taxpayers having to absorb more loss when we did the tiger dams. And as Debbie said, you know, we've paid a lot to help. And I know it's an undeniable situation. I don't, I don't, I don't love the situation that you're in or that we're in. I don't, I don't see a really easy answer on this one.
Well, then why was Gortables let out?
Pardon me?
Why was Gortables let out of their lease?
They didn't receive any money for fixing it up.
And every mon, every penny plus for fixing it up has gone right back into those buildings.
That was part of the contract though.
Absolutely. And, and we have sustained that. And we have rebuilt that as is.
Yeah, that funding that was spent to repair the building remains with the building. It's not a loss to the city. So I wouldn't even mention that or consider that.
Actually, go ahead.
Gortables was actually in discussion with the previous city manager to terminate their lease early before the flooding even occurred, just for informational purposes for the council.
So I think we, this is just a continuation of something that happened that none of us were ready for, none of us were prepared for. And I think that, you know, we're kind of wiping the slate clean and starting over. And I think that new tenants that would go in there that haven't had the devastation that previous tenants have had, just like when we renewed the, the refinery lease, you know, we literally said to them, you guys understand the risk you're taking, you know, where it's located, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I am okay with letting you out of this lease because again, you have seen the devastation. Um, you are going to continue to be in Punta Gorda. And again, you know, have we set a precedence? You know, I, I still think everything's a case by case basis, but at the same time, this is a continuation of the devastation we saw downtown. So I'm in favor of, of allowing you out of the lease. Again, when we have these new leasing that are going to come into these, um, buildings, just like we're going to redo the leases and make sure they really understand exactly what they're responsible for, if God forbid this happens again. You know, we also, you know, we need to educate the new, the new people that are there. But I think the people that have seen this devastation, um, I'm, I'm in favor of allowing you out of your lease.
So maybe we can have some sort of a compromise. Until you find, or until the city finds either way to have that leased out, we should consider having you responsible, just so that we have a continuation of, of money that comes in until we can find somebody that replaces it. We're not going to say that, you know, if we find somebody to replace it, you know, for next month, we're not going to hold you liable for the rest of the, the lease.
That's, I'm not for that at all.
I don't.
That is a very big financial burden for us. I'm, I'm sorry, and I understand, I do.
But you have to understand too, that the amount of money that we put back into that is, goes way beyond what you guys put back into that, way beyond. And so when we're looking at the, the financial thing that we had to do to get that space back to normal, it was a lot more than you guys spent. So you guys have to understand that, um.
Trust me, as, as a business owner and all I had to put into a place I leased, I totally understand it. And when I walked away, I couldn't take that with me either. So I completely understand the finances and the burden it is. The thing that I'm looking at here is that if you consider that this was going to be happening anytime sooner, you didn't give the city notice to say, hey, we're looking to find another place, you know, give us some time to look for someplace else, a 30 day, no 30 days?
No, ma'am, back in March, March of this year, we sent, we provided a letter.
So Dr. Reckhart, please.
I, I did not receive a letter. A letter like that would have gone to city council. Um, we cer, I certainly couldn't mutually agree to let you out of a lease.
I understand.
As was stated in your letter.
But we did notify in March and that we were looking, and this was the process that we were going down to.
That you were looking.
Looking is different.
Apparently there were flyers distributed within the community that you were moving to your new location and the city hadn't even been made aware that you were moving. Well, and then there's the issue of precedent. If, if you want out of your lease and we forgive it, then there's others that may want the same thing. And so how do we deal with that?
Yes, ma'am, and I understand that. I can go back. The foot landing was let out of their lease. Years ago, they were in the location that Coffee and Tea is in right now. There was the ceramic place that was before that. They also were let out of their lease. I don't know the exact dates and I don't know the determination and what that was. But we are asking for the forgiveness and we are asking that we will stay in this community. We want to be in this community.
I appreciate that. Now, did you consider not rebuilding in that location since you knew it wasn't great for you? Because you put a lot of money in and made it for your business, correct?
Absolutely.
If you had told us at that time when it was sort of an open slate and, I mean, it seems like you would have been better to make the decision sooner than you did because you had to save a lot of money if we could have let you out of the lease.
Well, with all due respect, this council was in a lot of flux at that time as well. So we were contacting the people that we were contacting that were available at that time.
This is the cost of doing business, you know, even if I was, uh, uh, your landlord personally, people are out of their leases all the time. It's a cost of doing business. You can either, we can either allow you out of the lease, or we can go down the path of pushing the lease legality. And then how much is that going to cost us with the city fighting against business owners? And at the end of the day, who's really going to win and how much money is going to be spent with this? For me, this is about supporting our businesses locally. You're staying here locally. You've been through devastation. I will not be, um, I would not be so open had you been brand new and not seen the devastation that you saw. Um, and I also won't be open to whomever takes over your, your spot afterwards because now we do have tiger dams. But they are unproven, right? So I understand. So at the end of the day, we have two decisions. We support businesses, we allow them out of the lease. It's a cost of doing business and we move on. Or we tell you, we're going to force this upon you, and then you're either going to pay or you're not going to pay, and then we're going to end up in a legal fight, and then how much is that going to cost the city? So.
We don't want to go down that.
I think, I think at the end of the day, this is something that we just need to move on from.
What date have you asked for forgiveness? Up to what date? And when do you plan on moving? So have you paid through a certain date or how?
We're paid through November.
Through November?
Yes, we are paid through November. Um, we have.
Planning on moving for December 1st or something?
Yes.
Yes.
So you've known this for a while, that you've been doing this, and we're, we've just, we're informed of this.
No, you were not just informed of this.
I didn't receive anything prior to this being on council agenda.
We provided a letter in March, and I can resend that letter if you wish. Um, we, our intention back at that time did notify that we would be renewing or that we would be, that we would be looking.
So just so council is aware, the way the contract is written, I'm going to kind of reverse this. Let's say they wanted to renew their lease for an additional term. They would have to provide at a minimum six months' notice to notify council, it's our intent to renew, but no more than nine months' notice, it is our intent to renew. I agree with Councilwoman Lockhart, you know, there would be legal fees incurred, just a matter of to what extent. And I want you guys to understand how precedent operates. It, it's not the rule, it is a suggestion. The more things have, the, the more times you guys do something, the harder it is to get out of it on the back end. So, but precedent isn't the law, it's not the rule, it's kind of the exception to it. You guys can do what you want to do. The contract is vague in some aspects that could potentially benefit the tenant. I think it's very, and that it's very well written in the city's behalf as well. Where the city could, I believe, succeed in court. It's not my job to give you guys the moral component of it, it's just the legal end of it, where it's, I think, you know, on paper, they would owe roughly $31,000. I believe they do have a security deposit on, with the city right now as well. But nothing indicates in the lease what happens in terms of an early termination. So that becomes open-ended for the city. But because it's open-ended at the same time, you're basically obligated till the end of the lease. And you were correct, it was August of 27 when, August of 27 for Coffee and Tea is due to expire.
No, that would be 26.
Okay. Unit 118 expires August 31st, 27. Unit 1112 expires May 31st of 26.
They should have been the same here.
Do we, do we have any people inquiring about Harold Court? We do not.
We have to look at is, this is our own checkbook too. This is taxpayers' money. This is, this is revenue that the city needs to have this done. I, I love your business. I understand as a small business owner that I did, that this is very devastating and tough. But man, if it was neat with this lease, like I said, I went out and sought somebody to take it over. Even if I didn't know, I would be knocking on the city manager's door. Hey, you know, did you get this? Did you respond to it? You know, this is our intent, you know, please let council have this, this discussion so that we would have time. But to say that you had a discussion, you sent something to it that we were supposed to understand what you were thinking about doing. And like Dr. Reckhart said, now all of a sudden you've sent out flyers and you're up in a couple of weeks.
We're trying. We're trying very hard to keep our business alive.
I understand that. I, I, like I said, as a business owner, but then to keep your business alive, I would have been saying, hey, we're going to be doing this. This is going to cost us a lot of money to get this other place ready. Are we able to do that, or do we have to continue our lease? Can we find somebody to take our space there so that we can move someplace else instead of just saying, well, we gave you notice six months ago and it was under the interpretation, but now we've already spent all this money in a new spot?
Ma'am, with all due respect, do, do we have to go back through, we have to rehash all the mismanagement and all the things that happened leading up to, um, the, the attempt at restoration, how long that took, how, what, what we got stolen during that period of time? Do we have to go through all of that?
Yes, we did, ma'am.
You did. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's a situation where the, the execution. So, it's a situation where the execution was just not there, and from this point on, we can't expect that the execution going forward is going to be, you talk about tiger dams. I was the one who was speaking in front of the group for aquafens. I was the one who was talking about doing something to protect those buildings. And for you, there is a river out there, okay? You can't have to expect, for us to sit here and put our whole livelihood and expect that you guys are going to effectively execute that when nothing has been executed effectively up to this point. Doesn't...
So what did you do to protect it yourself?
Well, we actually ended up putting spray around, around it, and we had let the city know that those barriers that were in front were never going to be enough.
Ma'am, and the barriers had, went down in, through Hurricane Ian. The barriers have not been fixed, they are still not fixed. I can show you where the barriers are still not fixed. The screws are not in place yet around all the units. There is a lot of damage still to those things. Nobody has informed us of a hurricane procedure to protect this building. Nobody has informed us that you have secured tiger dams. Nobody has reached out, nobody has reached out to us to say, hey, we are protecting this building. I, too, have heard things that are said. I've had some of the maintenance people say, yes, we've got the tiger dams. But nobody has given us any information on that. I've seen them working on the barriers. They've got the barrier up on the one door at the old gordobos, and that's still not fixed.
And you're welcome to inspect it all the way around and look and see what happens. But just because you've got tiger dam out there, you had a river out there. And so it's a situation where we're trying, we have to be protected because we can't go through that again. And if you can't protect us, if you can't keep that safe, that's a reason to terminate a lease.
But that's a speculation that we would, the city would not be able to keep it safe.
That is correct. But I will say this...
But you've had two opportunities with Helene and with Milton, and it failed.
And I would say, you talk about communication, there was, there has been no communication to me as the landlord, as the leasie, to say, we can protect you, or this is what we are doing. There has been no communication as to the steps that are being taken. Nobody has formally told us, this is where we're at.
All right. But a lease is a lease.
Did you consider asking for, to get out of the lease at the time of those floods? You know, Helene and Milton? Because that would have been a good time to ask, because everything was, you know, more up in the air, and now you've rebuilt and spent all that money.
Yes, ma'am.
I really feel for you. I do not like the situation at all.
I don't like it at all.
It took us up to December to reopen both of the businesses.
Yeah.
And that's why in March, when we were told that what was going to happen is that it was going to be fixed, nothing new that was going to be. That's why in March, we wrote a letter and we sent it, and we gave it, okay? And I understand that you're saying that you don't have a letter. Again, I will be happy to say, resend you that letter. And in the letter, we had line item after line after line item as to why we are concerned, and why we don't feel that we can keep the businesses there. And that's when we started our journey to try to find a new location.
I didn't see that either, sorry. Can we each, can I suggest a compromise? It's, I think it's, I don't know if it's, anyway, if they pay through December 31st, and we just work like crazy to get someone in there for the 1st of January?
I think they pay until we find somebody.
That would bankrupt them.
I mean, are we supporting businesses in town, or are we trying to bankrupt them? I mean, that's where we're at.
So let's give, let's give all the businesses $31,000.
We have, we have a si...
We don't have the lease to that.
We have a situation here where we had a flood that was unprecedented, and we now have, these are probably the last of the tenants, well, there's a couple more, but I mean, the rest of them, you know, the refinery renewed. We had a conversation with them.
The refinery is sold. The refinery is sold.
Whatever the name is, the new tenants, the new owners, right? They came before council. We had a very in-tune conversation. Do you understand A, B, C, D? You didn't have that conversation, and you went through devastation. So the precedence, I think, here is set, is the devastation part of it. And I'm sorry, but the court of public opinion, if this goes to court, is not going to favor for the city. You know, we look like bullies that were trying to put a business in bankruptcy. You know, at the end of the day, it's a cost of doing business regardless. We need to let you out of this lease, and we need to move on, and then advertise it, and try to get somebody else in there. But at the end of the day, you know, it's either blood from a stone and go to, go to court over it, or support a business that's going to remain in the city of Punta Gorda and move on. And with that, I would like to make a motion to allow the termination of the lease of the Punta Gorda Coffee and Tea.
Is everybody done with the conversation before she makes the motion?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The security deposit, because they're also asking to have their security deposit back, how much is that?
Kristin, do you have the amount of that?
I don't have it with me, but it's usually one month's worth of rent, but it would have been at the time of the original lease, so. I do also want to point out one other factor for December is in the December billing, when we do our leases, we do the catch-up for any amounts owed for property taxes, because we don't get the bill from the property appraiser till November. So for these two units, chocolate and wine, they would have a true-up for the adwarem tax of $352, and for the coffee and tea, $503. So I would ask that maybe we could at least collect that as well.
And that's fair, absolutely.
Point of order, Steve, Mr. Luskovich, when a motion's on the table, don't we allow either for a second or not a second, and then there's discussion after that?
Generally, but because there hasn't been a second, it can still continue.
Well, but there, but it was stopped by the mayor in order, and said, well, we're in discussion. But when there's a motion on the table, do we not second it and allow for discussion? Like, you know, it's not...
It can be done either way.
Either way, yeah.
Correct. It can be done either way.
Yes.
I still have a motion on the table.
I second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, so explain what your motion is.
My motion is to allow them to get out of their lease, as stated in 6B.
So you're agreeing for them to get out of the lease and get their deposit back?
Yes, as long as there's an inspection, whatever Kristin just had said, and there's an inspection, and it's in good condition, because that's the reason for a security deposit. Yes.
And for them to pay property taxes, too?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Yes.
And you second it? Okay.
So, hold on, are you amending the motion?
I will amend the motion to add what I just, what we just discussed.
That it would be what you discussed to also include that they would be responsible for the 352 for one unit and 503 for another unit?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye.
Aye. I'd like to amend it, and just, if we, I think that we could offer, if we suggest keeping the damaged deposit, it would help us get through and get renters in there.
So you make a motion?
So, Melissa's motion, but we keep the damaged deposit.
Well, the motion failed for that, so now you have to make a brand-new motion.
But before you do that, just so you guys know, they, their security deposit is one month rent.
Yep.
From what it was when they initially leased the premise a while ago.
One month rent for both leases.
Yeah.
It's approximately $5,000 between the two.
So you want to make a...
So I move that we keep the damaged deposit and the taxes owed, and release them from the lease.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Is that in agreement with you? Is that something that seems comparable for you?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry.
So we're clear, the motion is release them from their current lease.
Right.
Not be liable for any future payments. The city would keep their security deposits, and they would be responsible for the 352 for one unit and 503 for the second unit.
Yes. So we have a motion and a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Patty and Steve, have you guys already vacated the unit?
No, we still have, we're still working on that.
Okay. I'm just asking in terms of the keys and all that stuff as well.
Yes, yes. Would we give them back to Melissa?
Yes, please. Are you sticking with the November 30th date, as indicated in the letter?
Yes, but I do understand that it has to be December.
Yeah, comments has to be made at the podium.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, we are trying very hard to be out of there by November 30th. If for some reason we're not, I understand that we would have to pay the December rent.
Okay. Or at least if I would have some, be potentially interested in the space, that it would be available to be shown, shown?
And it could be right now. I mean, it is, for the most part, it is, almost everything is out of there. We just, the last, the last cleaning, we've been cleaning, we've been painting, we've been, you know, trying to put everything back together. We don't want to leave the space or the unit in a disarray. We have loved being downtown, and we want to make sure that we're still part of the community.
Patty, shout-out, where your new location's going to be?
I'm sorry, hon?
Where your new location's going to be?
We're going to be across the street from Fisherman's Village, right before the Visual Arts Center, so where the old SunTrust Punta Gorda Isles Bank was.
1107 West Marion, Suite 190.
I hope it works very well there for you.
Best of luck for your new location.
Thank you.
Okay, lease agreement with the CBVIA for repairs to the AC Freeman House.
Okay, that was included in your agenda packet. Attorney Luskovich has looked at it. The attorney for the CDVIA has looked at it. If you have any questions, we have representatives from CBVIA here, as well as city staff, so.
I have one question, which I don't know if it's CBVIA or probably a city question. A citizen asked me to make sure that the insurance that is going to be on the home, his exact words were, God forbid it burns down, that we have that covered.
Yes.
And who would be responsible?
City of Punta, City of Punta Gorda would have insurance on our structures.
He just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I move to approve 6C.
Will I second that?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you so much for doing this for us. TJ, want to say something?
TJ Thornberry for the record, and looking forward to working with the city on this project.
Thank you.
And the community.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so happy.
I am, I am.
So happy.
Okay, next on the agenda is the city clerk evaluation.
Good morning, Jeff Payne, HR Manager. So today, we're going to go over the city clerk evaluation, right? Every employee gets an annual performance review once a year. Sarah Welch is our C clerk. She was due for her evaluation on September the 1st. So as we go through this process, any increase that you decide to give her, I would ask maybe that you consider putting it back to September 1. It's hard to believe, I'm sorry, Sarah, she's been here seven years and 10 months with the city. It seems like it's just been yesterday.
Yeah.
And she's been the clerk for two years now. So every council member filled out an evaluation packet for Sarah. She got good scores. She is certainly eligible for the full 4% that has been approved by council. And with that, I will let you guys make any comments that you would like to do so.
I made all my comments on her evaluation, and she's doing a very fine job.
Anybody else want to make any comments?
She's the best city clerk we've ever had so far, 100.
So I'm sorry, Jeff, you had mentioned September for the...
September 1st is, would be the effective date.
I would make a motion for September 1st for the 4%.
Excellent.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for 4%?
I think that's what it, that's what it was.
That's the maximum, yes.
Okay. I mean, you can make any amount you want. So you want the 4%?
4% has traditionally been, is that correct, Dr. Reckert?
Yeah.
Yes, 4%.
Back pay to September?
September 1st, as I said, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And a motion and a second, all in favor for this?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The only one thing that I was hoping for is Treasury reports were a little lacking. I know that there was some redaction and stuff like that. So I'm hoping with the next election, we'll be more focused with what we're doing. And then I know that now that she's going to be able to type the minutes out a little bit easier, we'll start getting our minutes back, you know, on schedule, too. Thank you, Sarah.
Yes.
Okay, next is the word of agreement to Marine Contracting Group.
Good morning, Julie Rogan Sutter, procurement for the record. Procurement issued an invitation to bid for the seawall replacement program and as-needed repairs to establish a new agreement for these construction services. A solicitation was released, and notices were sent to 588 vendors. 15 viewed the bid online, and the city received two responses. The annual expenditures for this agreement will be dependent on the annual budgets, and the program will be adjusted to meet each budget. The unit prices are going to remain fixed for the initial year of the agreement, and a maximum annual price adjustments for years two and three have been established. The initial period for this agreement is three years and may renew upon mutual agreement of both parties for an additional three-year term. We're looking for awarded agreement to Marine Contracting Group of Punta Gorda, Florida for the seawall replacement program. Ron's here to answer any questions from the department, and the contractors also here, if you have any questions for them.
Any other questions?
I do.
I do. I actually asked for like a report from last year, what it looked like and what was done.
Ron Everett's Public Works Director. So I'm assuming you were meaning in regards to...
Like, how much did they get? You know, the biggest thing that I'm looking at, and I apologize for cutting you off there, is that, which might clarify what you're looking for, is, you know, we had three contracting groups, and now we're down to one, just trying to even fix all our hurricane stuff. And now we have the same person trying to do maintenance as well. So I'm wondering how that worked with maintenance as well as getting everything fixed. Because I know that we're still not complete, and we were looking to be completing a year ago, and so...
So I would say that this solicitation was bid out in March of this year. Unfortunately, we only received one response, and that response, the prices, was 200% over the current agreement prices, and the department declined to move forward because it was, the amount of work that we could have got done with that such high unit prices wasn't reasonable. So this was then redone again in September, and now we're bringing the results to you.
So in regards to the Ian project, which I think is what you were alluding to, the total of that project is 36,198 feet. To date, the linear foot completed is 3,000, or excuse me, 30,498 feet. So it's roughly about 6,000 feet to go. Total amount paid to date in 2025 was $5,286,886. The MCG has stepped up and brought in additional barge to help get those, get that project wrapped up. We've had numerous meetings with them. They've been very accommodating in working with us, and we've been satisfied so far with how that's going. They've dedicated one barge to the maintenance program, and currently, maintenance program, the total linear foot is 8,860 feet. At to-date, they've completed 251 feet, and total paid out in 2025 was $142,875. I will note that they've had several large, pretty severe breakdowns of some of their equipment costly, and we've had, they had a crane down for a number of weeks, and they've got another crane down now with a major malfunction. So they've been working really hard to get those things back up and running and working with the city, but there have been some delays, and that's part of doing construction.
So with the three years, year two is a 10% increase, year three is another 10% increase?
No, that's listed as a maximum percentage increase. Once they request an increase, they will have to provide justification... Once they request an increase, they will have to provide justification on whatever percentage they apply for, but it will not extend beyond that 10%. Usually we use a CPI and other factors to determine whether they're eligible for whatever they requested.
And the only other thing with automatic renewal, my question is, what happens if we decide to go with a different type of seawall? If we're gonna change out any materials or anything like that, what does that do to this contract?
As part of the agreement, the city has the option to terminate in years two and three of the agreement. And also, each division is notified 120 days prior to the renewal period. Both contractor and the city have the option not to renew.
Okay, 'cause it says in their automatic renewal for another three years, so.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if we have another, and they've been great, so.
That we send those notifications out to just remind everybody.
Perfect. Greg, you have a question?
No, he answered it.
Chris and Simeon, just for clarification, Ron was giving you the numbers related just to the hurricane repairs. They did have additional payments to them for their regular contract because they were working in BSI and things like that, so, on the regular maintenance.
And we pay them as work is done. So if they didn't get it, they don't get paid once they do the work.
Correct. And then even out of each draw, there's a retainage and there's a certain timeframe before they, we can release the retainage.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I move to approve 6E.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion of second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is approval of change order to Ashley Brown.
Chris and Simeon, so we have Ashley Brown. They are requesting a price increase of 2.3% for the audit for 2024 services to 9/30/2025 and a 2.9% increase for the 25 fiscal year that is completed during fiscal year 26. The total increase for the two years is $3,269.30. They did not request an increase over the past two years prior. They had left it flat. When they did do their renewal, they had originally requested for the 5.8% that was based on CPI for that very first year of the renewal and we had negotiated with them to do 4%. So they have not requested increases and we have also had a lower increase in CPI in that first year. Any questions?
And the other thing is that after this year, we won't have a CRA audit, which is also gonna say this.
Correct. So for fiscal year 26, there'll be no CRA audit.
That's awesome. Anybody?
Move to approve 6F.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second on favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the award amendment for the wastewater treatment plant biosalads, the preliminary design report.
Good morning. Tom Spencer, Utilities Director for the record. On March 1st, 2018, council awarded fighting engineer for wastewater treatment works improvement project. It was awarded, which includes hourly rate. Staff has requested a proposal from CDM Smith for engineering services to prepare a preliminary design report for future biosalads processing at the wastewater treatment plant. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection regulations will limit the land application of liquid biosalads to the hayfields at the wastewater treatment plant. The consultant will review the land application permit, project production over a 20-year planning period and develop a plan to comply with the regulation changes. A preliminary design report will be provided to the city documenting the engineer's findings, evaluations, recommendations, and provide a cost estimate. The total not to exceed cost is $347,480 to complete the project in approximately 35 weeks after the notice to proceed. The staff is recommending the award of Amendment 12 to CDM Smith of Fort Myers. Just a little background, the biosalads handling is probably one of the most critical parts. It's, it's a very final step in the processing and if you can't get rid of your biosalads, you have no way to treat. So with the rules changing and the regulations changing on how we can apply those to our hayfields and how we have to dispose of those, this is a very critical piece.
Any questions here, Tom?
No.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve 6G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. They're beating you, Janine.
That's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Project and grant update.
Mr. Spencer, would you stay up there just for a second? City Council has asked to have as a part of the regular meeting an update on projects and grant applications and things of that nature. I want to start with the high point of all of this and that is the announcement of a grant award. And Mr. Spencer, would you like to talk about that, please?
Sure. I'm pleased to report that the city's been awarded funding under the supplemental appropriation for Hurricane Celine in Milton, program for drinking water appropriations and wastewater with funds obligated for the Punta Gorda projects. The next step is to complete our loan applications for both drinking water and wastewater projects through the SRF. Our loan application package totaling $66.3 million has a total forgiveness of principal of $22.8 million. That application is due in March 12th of 2026. This is partial funding, so we will continue working towards planning and figuring out the best way to leverage those funds and secure additional funds. While discussing this, I'd like to thank our consultants from Corolo and from CDM Smith who helped us secure these, these grants.
Thank you.
And that applause is also for Mr. Lemonquill as well, who just came into the room who worked on this project immensely as well.
Rick's help. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I'll continue on with the grants. Richard Rick has also submitted an Arbor Day grant and a Tree City USA grant and an urban forestry grant that we're working on right now. So that'll help restore some of the trees to our parks, which will be a great step forward. Okay, some of the projects that we are working on right now, the permitting online, so that's our building software, that we are expected to have an award date of 1/21/2026. The procurement study that we talked about months ago, I approved the final draft of the bid documents at about 1:30 in the morning and, well, Ann sent them to me about 1:30 and I got them back to her a little after that. So we'll be moving forward with that. The City Hall Council chambers, the rec has been entered and the scope and that should be out to bid very shortly. The historic portion, we're also working on the last pieces of that scope. That bid should go out momentarily. The FEMA contractor is just pending Kristin's review, I believe. So that again, something that'll be out pretty quickly. The award for the Veterans' gazebo is expected on December 3rd. And these, these dates are all in your packets as well. The Gilchrist restrooms, we're, the last piece that we're waiting on is the drinking fountains, but we are on track for those to open on schedule, the restrooms themselves. We've got the Herald Court membrane, just finishing up a couple items there. So that's ready to go out to bid. Splash pad, the work continues, just about ready to, yesterday when I was out there, they were filling in the holes and hopefully pouring the concrete pretty quick here. The AMI system, the budgetary quote is in process for that. The RO documents, Tom's working very hard on getting those completed. The well field, bid documents for utilities are under final review. The bayfront, we just started working on the interior design of that and then we'll have that ready to go out to bid. We've got the pirate ship, we're having, Public Works staff is working with procurement on those bid docs. Boca Grand drainage, the final plans are, the final plans are in place. We're just working on the bid documents to be able to start that project. We do have the release of funds though, so we, we can spend grant money, grant money on that. The city website is new and it's gonna have a little bit of growing pains over the next couple of weeks while we kind of work out the bugs. We will present the website to City Council at a future council date as soon as we have everything worked out. But we really shifted that to be more user-focused. So we looked at what are the places that, where are the most hits going on our website? And what words are going in the Google box to determine what needed to be highlighted on the website? And there's a couple of things that some people are really passionate about that say didn't receive the most hits, but somebody's really passionate about it. We're trying to be flexible and adapt to those types of things as well. But it's, the nice thing is the backend system is the same. So our city staff is already trained and we, so we don't have any additional training there. The ponds, walkways, we're evaluating those right now. Anticipated to have those bid documents or the scope done by 12:15 and then the bid documents will be shortly thereafter. Fence for Public Works, that is, the scope is completed and I believe that's either out to bid or close to out to bid at the end of last week. Park rental software, we're, we're getting an updated quote. We're anticipated to have that scope completed yet this week. Tiger Dam installation's 100% complete. And then we also did the approval of the A.C. Freeman House contract today, so that's done. Any questions or any projects that I didn't cover? Pickleball courts, those are ready to go out to bid. We were waiting on one final construction list. So as soon as that list, which I understand was getting sent over late yesterday, we can bid that out. That project is a little different than the last time we resurfaced the courts because we didn't have the fencing around it as a part of the project. So that made the scope and the, all of the documents required a little different and that's what took a little bit more time, is making sure that we could bid that all out at once and not as separate bids. Anything else I missed that?
I was inspecting the harbor walk last night and I was happy to see that there's quite a bit of chain link fencing there. There's just the corner in front of the waterfront hotel that has to be poured. But I mean, we still don't have the event center, although we can Uchi around and go through the parking lot and, you know, there's issues, but at least we will almost have a continuous walk, correct?
Yes, that's absolutely, absolutely correct. Public Works and the whole team over there has been working really hard on those things. We're working on some lighting solutions for that, that area right there. But the goal is to have that as much of the harbor walk as possible done by November 30th and that's, that's the way we've approached it all along. We do have some work, of course, on some of the piers that need to be done and the, and the pathways along the harbor walk that are over the water. We're working through whether or not those are gonna require some permitting for. Some of them are more land-based that we can have our internal staff work on as they free up. But you all know that holidays, those take staff time because we have to put up decorations and the, we're getting the speed bumps put back in on Marion. All of the little things add up in pole staff, other places. So Ron's doing a really good job of trying to adapt to the, the most important pressing needs with safety always being first, but still maintaining our local hometown community feel and the things that are important to our residents to feel like we are recovering from the hurricane.
And I'll just bring up, since Cindy brought up her grandchild, I do know and recognize that the lighting took a long time to fix. It was flooded, a lot of probably underground things that were going on that they fixed. But there, there is a section around the playground and with it getting darker, how long before that gets fixed?
Do you have an estimate on that, Ron?
Ron Everts, Public Works. Just two days ago, the final panel was repaired in, in the park and lit up that center section where the police have the "Park Closed at Night" sign. I'm not sure exactly what lights you're talking about. I will find out from the electrician. I know they've got power to everything, but there's outages, you know, bulbs, fuses, connections, lots of little things that they're gonna have to continue. But we've got enough lighting on that I'm going to make the suggestion to Melissa and hopefully get her approval to remove the sign, the police sign because the pathway is lit enough through the nighttime hours that we can take that out of there.
Okay, and Mayor Lux was just asking me about CIP updates. CIP update comes out in January. You'll have a full presentation from council. You can keep up with the project reports. They are listed on the website for, not all of the CIP projects, but some of them are included in that project report. But you'll get the comprehensive update in January on those. I was also asked to talk about some of the DRC items that have moved through. And I'm just gonna recap for you, October to November right now, we had the Christmas tree, or the, I'm sorry, the Christmas parade was approved, the Salty Tarpin American-made band, the Neighborhood Fall Festival. We had a vested rights determination for 297 East Virginia and 407 Wood Street. We proved the lighting in the Fisherman's Village, New Year's Eve at Fisherman's Village. The great Mr. Swindles is coming back again, light up the night. And then DRC will hear the Deep Creek Community Church Christmas Eve service, the Sullivan Street Craft Fair and Holly Jolly Market. And Deep Creek Community's church has another item on there. Questions? Pretty good?
I have one question, Tom. When we fixed the hard walk area, where you say some of it's on land, some of it's over water, is there any way of doing like a floating dock in the area that's over the water to help? I don't know if that's even feasible or not.
Ron Everts, Public Works. The section that Melissa was referring to is the condo boardwalk and there's a small portion of that on the eastern end that's on land. And so Brian and I have looked, the city engineer and myself have looked at it and we plan on using city staff to replace what needs to be done on that end. That's gonna be the most expedient way of getting that done.
Awesome, man. We like that. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Nice. Okay, farmers market.
Good afternoon, City Council. City Clerk Sarah Welch for the record. Memo in the agenda provides an overview of state statute regarding business tax receipts, including exemptions for certain businesses, as well as the portion of Punta Gorda Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, which deals with farmers markets, which fall under the fleet market category in our code. As described in the memo, the fee structure for farmers markets was amended in response to local proprietors' concerns that the fee was too high back in 2018. We ran some calculations based on the fees charged by farmer market proprietors and the average number of vendors they have each week and determined that the local farmers markets pay about 5% or less of their vendor fee revenues for the city's local business tax receipt under the current fee structure. The most recent fees for farmers markets were as follows. History Park Farmers Market, $1,260 for the year. Punta Gorda Farmers Market, $3,969 for the year. While these amounts are not large in the grand scheme of the budget, they are revenue that may become even more important depending on what happens with property taxes in the future. Additionally, it is important to note the range of vendors at the markets falls outside of the exemptions for businesses described in Florida statutes 205.0641 and 2, which concern more agriculturally, solely agriculturally focused farmers markets. If council decides to amend the fee structure, such a change would need to be accomplished by adoption of an ordinance, which would include a public hearing process and legal review to ensure compliance with existing state regulations.
So who pays the 3,000? The person who organizes the market?
The market organizer, they pay.
Okay, and then the businesses themselves pay? Okay, and then the businesses themselves pay?
They pay the market organizer a fee.
So the city does not receive any additional fees other than whoever's leasing the land or the use of that land?
Correct. We just have the business tax receipt and then we also have?
Yeah, we can't hear, we gotta wait.
Oh, is it back on? There we go. Could you repeat your question again, Janice? I'm sorry.
That's the only money that the city receives and then the market people pay the organizer.
Correct.
So they don't have any other taxes, the individuals? Because at one point I thought there was a tax.
I believe they would have sales tax.
Oh, sales tax, sure. Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. And how do we choose who runs those markets?
We don't.
Who does?
Whoever owns the land. So I suppose in a sense for the downtown farmers market, that location is?
Sorry, I can't really hear you, it's the microphone again.
I'm sorry, I'll try. Oh, there we go. So for the downtown farmers market, since that spot is city owned, city council, I suppose, would have ultimate say about what happens with that. But for the History Park Farmers Market, that one is organized by the, I believe it's the Punta Gorda Historical Society or the History Center, who has the lease for that land. So they choose. Not HPE. Thank you, the Historical Society.
Janine Polk for the record. So what kind of liability insurance are they required to have as far as anybody tripping and falling? Because obviously it's inviting a lot of people downtown. And my concern is that, you know, that we could, we could face some kind of backlash. So how does that work? Do they have to have liability insurance?
That would be a question for another staff member, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I do have a question.
This conversation is only about the fee structure. That's it, period.
That was the intent, yes.
So it would be part of the fee though, wouldn't it? I mean, don't you have to pay something either to the city or do you, do you cover it yourself?
It's only about the business tax fees.
So I have a question here. And I know this is maybe one of the concerns that some of the vendors have been having is they go from one spot to another spot. But if they, one week are here and one week are there and they have a business tax. And I was trying to look at the mobile vendor regulations. And I'm thinking if one vendor wants to be downtown one week and at the farmers market the next week, do they have to pay a business tax to both those two places, even though they can only be at one place during that time?
The business tax is paid by the organizer of the market, not the vendors. They would pay fees to the organizers, not to us.
But is that a rule or regulation that it does that? Or is that the city just saying that we wanted the organizer to have that payment go to them, so that they pay us? And the only reason why I'm asking again is because if the city, you know, if the vendors pay directly to the city, I know which is another headache. But when you've got these local tiny farmers market who might want to take advantage of more than one area, they can only be in one area on that day, then they're paying one vendor, then they're paying the other, excuse me, they're paying one event coordinator, then they have to pay the other event coordinator for a business tax when they're just one business. Do you see what I'm saying? That they don't stick all the time with one event coordinator, that they move.
So.
Did that make sense? It didn't make sense at all.
I think what you're saying is if, if there's a soap company that wants to be in two different markets, but they're just one person, but they want to have a table at both markets, do they have to pay twice?
Or if they have a table at one market one week and a table at the, you know, another week at the other market, just so that they have a variety of points.
They don't pay us, they pay the market organizers.
But in essence, they're still paying business tax twice.
No.
Or the vendor tax.
All they pay is sales tax, correct? And that goes wherever they are? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
They pay, they paid a rent from the organizer and they pay sales tax. But there is no, from what she said, there's no business tax.
Yeah, the vendors don't pay a business tax to us unless they happen to have an office location within the city.
Okay, does that clarify?
Yep.
Do you want me to pull up the language that describes how the business tax is assessed on the farmers markets?
But yeah, and that's what I was saying, you know, you have the business tax and I understand if they have a sales tax. But if they're paying a business tax with one event place and then all of a sudden they want to go to another one the next week, then they have to pay that business tax again to that other.
They don't pay a business tax to the vendors, to the organizers, I'm sorry. They pay a fee that the organizer sets to be present at their market. The amount is up to the?
They collect for the city.
They pay, here, let me pull it up real quick.
So Sarah, each business pays their own sales tax to the city directly, correct?
No.
No, sales tax is not. That would be a question.
Sales tax is paid through the state.
Yeah, of course, okay.
So here's how the business tax is charged currently. Flea markets shall pay, the organizer that is, shall pay to the city one local business tax for each retail merchant selling goods or products at the flea market based upon the highest number of merchants on the business premises on any single day during the previous received year or in the case of new businesses being based on an estimate for the current, I'm sorry, that's the old language. Flea markets shall pay to the city one local business tax for each retail merchant selling goods or products at the flea market based upon the average number of merchants on the business premises. So they report to us each month how many people they've had weekly.
Right, and from what I understand though, is that the vendors charge them one annual fee that they collect. And that's where I'm saying that?
That's not necessarily true. I believe it varies based upon the market organizer. I believe some of them have weekly options for vendors who don't want to?
There's a set fee that they pay weekly. But what's, let's say that that one week they don't want to go, do they still have to pay that weekly fee if they go someplace else? And if they go someplace else?
That wouldn't have anything to do with us.
Nothing to do with the city.
Okay, so it's still a business tax. And I think the reason why, I'm just trying to do the Florida statute with the business, the Florida business taxes. And then now we have two visitors, I mean, two vendors, two event coordinators. And they're charging that local business tax to, you know, each vendor.
They charge a fee to be present at the markets, but they don't charge them a business tax.
Correct.
I could pull up, I could try pulling up?
No, I think I understood it incorrectly by vendors thinking that they were paying business tax more than once, more than one area. So I got it.
We have Mr. Purcell here. Would you like, would you like to educate us a little bit?
I got it.
We, you did have a question about insurance and Courtney can answer that if you'd like.
Insurance.
Hi, Courtney Buckles, HR's coordinator. So like any other city owned property event within the application or the agreement, we require a certificate of insurance. We require an indemnification, hold harmless, so it's very status quo.
Perfect. That's easy.
So if somebody tripped and fell on the street during farmers market, who's responsible?
That would depend on the entirety of the situation and the tax.
Good answer. Mr. Luskovich again.
Yeah, so keep in mind, you guys, it's, business tax is what you're talking about.
Correct, and that's it.
But it's relevant.
No, it's not. Has nothing to do with business tax, zero.
I suggest we put on the agenda further discussion of farmers markets so we have a little more leeway to discuss, for example, how much they're paying as we're evaluating all our rental units and everything that receives money.
Yes.
So that's not for the business tax though?
No, but I'm asking to put on the agenda later, just to discuss.
Another, another meeting?
Yeah, another time.
So do you want to, are you asking to table this and bring it all together at another meeting or you want to discuss this right now?
We should finish this discussion, but to be able to talk about markets in general, how to maximize the usage, the revenue, the whatever, we're trying to discuss here that we're not allowed to.
So the question is, do we want to make any changes to this? I don't see any changes necessary. Anybody else?
Do you have a motion?
I mean, this is just direction to staff if any changes are desired, there's no motion needed.
Yeah.
Direction to staff what you want. So is it a consensus to not do anything?
Yeah.
Yes.
Janine?
I mean, we call it a farmers market, but you're saying it's really a flea market? Or in some instances it is and in some it is not, depending on the vendor.
Here's the definition in our code here, flea market. For the purposes of this chapter, the term flea market shall mean a market, often outdoors, consisting of a number of individual stalls rented by vendors to sell old or used articles, curios, antiques and inexpensive merchandise. The term shall also include farmers market. Emphasis was added just to make it easier to spot that.
I think what Janine is also asking is because of Chapter 26, Section 4.4, what are we considering? The farmers market is a special event, is it a business event? You know, I think that's, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Brand opening, temporary promotional, temporary use permit. I think that's, we should ask about that.
So I think we have a consensus, we're not making changes of business tax, which is what is on the agenda for today.
Janine asked for clarification.
Yes.
Yes? Great, Janice?
Agreed.
Okay, consensus, yes.
Okay.
Okay, next, event permit for New Year's Eve at Fisherman's Village.
Good afternoon, council. Rachel Berry is zoning official for the record.
Sorry, Rachel, can I stop you?
Absolutely.
Were we having a consensus for a future meeting then that Janice asked for? I think we have to have a consensus for that to go on the future meeting. So is there a consensus?
Just, just on the agenda, not an actual, you know?
Put on a future agenda?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I will put it on the agenda as soon as legal advises that we are able to do so.
Sure.
Sorry, Rachel.
That's okay. Rachel Berry, zoning official for the record. This agenda item is for event permit 25-195581, New Year's Eve at Fisherman's Village. For, of course, December 31st, 2025. The applicant is requesting council approval of street closures for the event. And I believe she is here, do you have any questions?
Patty was here.
She was, I believe she left.
Done every year, pretty much. So there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve 6K.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second on favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I did send you some questions on.
All right, good afternoon again.
Light up the night.
Rachel Berry, zoning official for the record. This permit number is 25-196152, Light Up the Night, 2025, tree lighting for December 5th, 2025. Garrett Kaiser was here, but he as well had to leave. But he did give me a little note that I will read on his behalf. All right, Punta Gorda's Light Up the Night returns December 5th with live music, Santa and tree lighting ceremony honoring fallen Deputy Eleo Diaz. Punta Gorda, Florida, the holiday season officially kicks off in downtown Punta Gorda on a Friday, December 5th, when the community gathers for the annual Light Up the Night celebration from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This year's event will be bigger than ever, featuring two separate performance stages, one dedicated to live music and another showcasing local youth performers, including dance studios, singers and creative arts programs from across Charlotte County. Also, a big thanks to Ghetto Automotive for their generous sponsorship. The tree will be decked out with all new, all brand new ornaments. Santa Claus will make his grand arrival at 6:00 PM, bringing holiday cheer to families and children of all ages. The live music stage will come alive at 6:15 PM with performances by Evan Taylor Jones, followed by headliner Josie South. At 8:30 PM, the evening's highlight, the lighting of the Punta Gorda's Christmas tree will take place. This year's tree will be lit in a moving tribute by the family of fallen Deputy Eleo Diaz, I apologize, honoring his service and memory. Light Up the Night is all about community, celebrating the spirit of Punta Gorda, celebrating our local talent and remembering those who have given so much, said Garrett Kaiser, chair of Light Up the Night Punta Gorda. It's a night for everyone, families, friends and visitors, to come together and share the holiday magic. This event is free and open to the public, featuring magical snow machines that transform local artisans, that transform the streets into a white Christmas experience. Enjoy a variety of food vendors, talented local artisans and community organizations lining the downtown area. Guests are encouraged to bring lawn chairs or blankets to relax and take in the evening's live performances. For more information to discuss sponsorship opportunities or volunteer signups, visit www.lightupthenightpg.com or follow @lightupthenightpg on Facebook.
Any questions?
There's no discussion, I will move to approve 6L, Light Up the Night, 2025, tree lighting.
Second up?
Do we have a motion and a second to approve, on favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. City reserve policies review.
Is there any way I can ask for five minutes?
And discussion? Sure, we're going to take a five minute break.
Five minutes, I mean, yeah. He's restroom.
Be assigned. For the utilities fund, the city will maintain an unassigned fund balance minimum of at least three point one million dollars. And for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2025, the city's utilities fund unassigned balance is projected at approximately eight point nine million dollars. Projected for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2026, the unassigned balance is four point two million dollars. So this is adequate for funding the five-year capital improvement plan through fiscal year 2030 with the estimated rate increases from the rate sufficiency study and projected use of financing in the five-year plan. And again, this is reviewed every year. For the utilities fund for protection of infrastructure, a renewal and replacement reserve of one point five million dollars will continue for unforeseen major line breaks and equipment failures. And this reserve has been maintained. And just as a point of information on this particular reserve, this reserve was first started when we had our utility bonds and were required to accumulate that amount of funds. And so again, having those funds will help us when we do, if we do go out for bonds. The utilities fund for protection of infrastructure will cash fund a minimum of one point one million dollars annually for recurring line and lift station renewal and replacements as identified in the five-year capital improvement plan. And again, we have budgeted that amount of funds for those purposes. The city will provide a capital outlay reserve for each of the major funds based on the five-year capital outlay program needs and will fund the average annualized five-year need in order to provide a stabilized funding plan for the general fund and other funds as practical. So the city council has established a capital outlay reserve for the general fund, utility funds, and sanitation fund. However, with the sanitation fund is currently funding one truck per year, which kind of eliminated the need of accumulating funding for multiple truck purchases in any single year. So at one point, we were kind of doing four at a time, and we're now trying to do an annual amount. The canal maintenance districts will fund replacement of seawalls to allow for adequate linear footage replacement based on existing analysis. After receiving a consultant's report regarding age and estimated life of the seawall system, both Burt Store Isles Canal Maintenance District and PGI Canal Maintenance District increased the number of lineal feet to be replaced in a program each year. And again, they do review that each year to try and make sure they're staying on target. The city will not permit a deteriorating financial condition as described by the Florida Auditor General in Florida Statute, Section 218.503, that would result in an audit management letter finding. Florida statutes identify a number of items that can trigger the state-described indicator or of deteriorating financial conditions. The city is in compliance with all of those indicators, thereby avoiding a finding of deteriorating financial condition. The city will monitor financial indicator trends. We will follow the Florida Auditor General Financial Condition Assessment Procedures. And so again, the city monitors financial indicators as recommended by the auditor general as part of its annual budget process. And these trends are discussed as well with the city's external auditor each year during the audit process. Annually, the city will appropriate a contingency line item in funds where deemed necessary to provide for unanticipated expenditures of a nonrecurring nature or to meet small increases in service delivery costs. Two of the city's larger funds, the general fund and the utilities fund, have contingency accounts set aside for unanticipated emergencies or small increases in service delivery. The canal district funds also have a contingency account for an unforeseen seawall failure. The city does not foresee a need to supplement fund balances with a budgeted contingency in its smaller funds. All projected beginning and ending fund balances will be presented in the annual budget. The annual budget includes all fund balance projections within each fund. And then I just wanted to provide some information about the various meetings and workshops where we kind of talk about the beginning fund balances, ending fund balances, the five-year pro formas, showing all that information. So we kind of, this was just for the last fiscal year. So in March, we had our long-range financial plan. We had a budget workshop in May, council meeting in June. We had an additional update in July. August, we had the proposed budget message, which kind of finalizes everything for, as far as the transfers for computer overhead and administrative charges. And then we had our two budget hearings. So that was for the general fund. And then for other funds, there's also some additional opportunities. So you have your BSI Canal Advisory Board, PGI Canal Advisory Board. We had some workshops for that. We had workshops for sanitation, building, and gas tax funds. We also met with the utility advisory board. We met with the building board. So again, we have a lot of opportunities there as well. So now we're going to kind of go into the research. So Venice, this was their one and only policy on reserve funds. So they are using a three months for their unassigned fund balance instead of two months. For their, that's for their general fund. For their building permit fund, they have a hundred percent because they're using a twelve-month balance. Enterprise funds are using a thirty-three percent. So that's four months of operating expenses. And the utilities enterprise fund is using six months, so fifty percent. When we go to the next page, this was on their, in their fiscal year 25 budget, because again, a lot of the fiscal year 26 budgets are not posted yet online. But they had a fifty percent reserve balance in their general fund at this time, at that time. And it shows the various categories that they have, as well as some future ones, which when they did that, they show that they were kind of behind if they counted those future items that they would be looking for. And I wanted to point out too, when I did look at Venice, they had a comment in their policies as well, saying that the rating agencies have, under long-range planning, but the rating agencies have recognized the city of Venice's sound financial condition, supported by low long-term liability burden relative to the city's resource base, and superior financial resilience supported by high reserves and superior inherent budget flexibility. Because again, it allows a little more flexibility to have those, those reserves available. And we have Charlotte County. Charlotte County had a very long list of reserve policies. For their general fund, they have, I did want to point out one thing. So on number four, or number five, and they may just need to update their policies a little bit, but they mentioned that the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum general fund reserve of no less than five to fifteen percent. So I went, I went out to the website just to make sure, and it is, it is definitely that they want two months operating, which is sixteen point seven percent. But some of their general fund or ad valorem reserve policies are a reserve for contingency, which is not less than five percent, but not greater than ten percent of the total of the budget. And they define the budget as all revenues plus beginning reserves is how they're defining their budget number. So that even includes the reserves as part of the calculation. Oops, I want to stay on there. So number two was their cash carry forward. And again, they are trying, for that, they are trying to do five, not less than five percent or greater than ten percent of total revenue of the budget, again, including the beginning balance of reserves. Then they have a fiscal stabilization reserve, and that one is, should maintain not less than fifteen percent of the total of the budget. And then they have a future capital outlay reserve. And again, that's for the purpose of funding, and that one is, are, those funds are moved over into the capital projects fund. So they take that out of their general fund and move them over to the capital projects fund. And again, they have various reserves for the various utilities. They're generally between twenty-five to thirty-three percent. Solid waste is sixteen point seven to twenty-five percent. Sanitation, sixteen point seven to twenty-five percent. And again, they're just using sixty to ninety days, so that's the percentage. I did find this on their website when they were going through their budget. So for this past fiscal year, so this is the list of their reserves at that time that they were presenting to their committee. And you can just see how the total amount of their reserves, the percentage of their budget, and their targets. And on this one, they did have a disaster retention as well, so even though it wasn't included originally in their earlier items. And again, that was just another slide from Charlotte County. We have Northport. They established a new policy back in 2020 that establishes retaining a twenty percent emergency and disaster reserve and up to an additional ten percent for an economic stabilization reserve. And then this was the list of how they come up with their balance and what they might have available over and above those reserves. One thing I did want to point out, under Northport, under their fund balance categories of their policies, it's item C surplus, and this might be something we want to discuss as well, but it says, if there is a surplus at fiscal year end, the operating fund should be appropriated as follows. To cover any anticipated budgetary shortfalls in the current fiscal year or any shortfall forecasted in the following five years. So again, they use a five-year pro forma as well. To reduce long-term debt if possible. To deposit into a fund that stabilizes pension contributions to achieve a normal growth rate. To fund pay-as-you-go capital projects or expenditures, and to fund a capital asset renewal and replacement fund. So they just kind of put how they want to use those surplus funds if there are any available. And if there's shortfalls, they have a policy about how to reestablish getting those back on track. Okay, then we have Cape Coral. Again, there's, we're a little more. They have a policy to maintain two to three months of expenditures for their general fund. And they call it a budget, budget stabilization reserve. And they do it in their committed fund balance, so they actually adopt it by ordinance. Again, that, when we do things by ordinance, that's two readings, so I'm not sure that we would need to do something like that, but I just wanted to point that out. And then they talk about how they fund the budget stabilization reserve again. So they use three months, and then they also have, besides that reserve, they have a disaster reserve of eight million dollars in addition. Then they have their assigned fund balance shall include the annual amount of purchase order balances carried forward to the next year, as well as the subsequent years of fund balance resources for one-time use as identified for specific purposes by the city council and set forth in the annual budget and any amendments thereto. So I just wanted to point out, they do have several reserve buckets as well. And again, this was just their chart showing what they have currently. And then for the city of Sarasota, they're using two to three months, so seventeen to twenty-five percent of their general fund expenditure, expenditures. For their fiscal year 24, 25 budget, they were at twenty-six point nine percent of expenditures. And then in addition to that, they had a revenue stabilization fund that had approximately two point nine million dollars in it as well. So they were at twenty-nine point six percent. And, and these were their policies for reserves. So now we'll open it up to discussion, and if you would like to have any of ours reviewed or changed, or if you feel they're sufficient. One thing I did notice is a lot of them are just trying to say, you know, you really have to have the need for flexibility in your policies. But it's a preference by council of how you want to see the policies.
Janine Holt for the record, so I'll just start. I noticed in a couple of them, they had an emergency and disaster reserve or a disaster reserve. Do we have that?
So currently, we do, we don't have one specifically. We do have some funds set aside in our special use fund. But again, that's not specifically just for an emergency. It's for council discretion on whatever they want to use it on, so it's not specifically there. And then the rest is in the general fund. It's just part of our total balance, total fund balance.
Do you know what the percentage is in that special use fund? Or the amount?
You know what, I think we have it in the, it was on one of the slides, so let me just go to that. Okay, so in our special use fund. Oh, so we don't have it on listed, so I would have to double-check on that for you. I don't have it with me.
Okay, thanks.
So are you asking for that because you're thinking that should actually be maybe for
Per disaster relief?
Disaster. Instead of just.
Should at least be a discussion.
Yes, because like right now, we use some of those special use funds for the downtown flooding. We took, that was some of the Fishville money, because that's where that money went into was the special use fund, and we used that for the downtown flooding. But it's already appropriated, so it would just be whatever's remaining.
But would, like saying the downtown, that actually has to do with hurricane disaster recoveries in a way?
It does, but it wasn't, it wasn't a recovery, it wasn't a recovery project.
It wasn't the immediate.
Yes, yes.
And that is one of the things I feel personally, that, you know, a lot of people get upset that we don't have things fixed immediately, and a lot of that is because of cost, and we're waiting on FEMA or whoever else, insurance. So I'm just wondering, other cities, it seemed like every city you showed us had a specific amount set aside for disaster, emergency and disaster reserve.
Yep. And again, some of them spell it out in their policy, and some of them just still had it, just as you, as you noticed.
If we would, let's just say we, let me get my thoughts together. So special use probably allows us to be more flexible with where we can use that money. But if we then, so we could use it for hurricane. But my concern is if we then just did a hurricane one, would that kind of make us only use that for hurricane? In other words, is a special use good enough and more flexible, in your opinion, than if we had two, or just change the name?
And it's definitely more flexible. However, council can change their policy at any time. So if you did have a hurricane policy that said, hey, we're going to put this much in a reserve, and then say you had to use it, how, how would you refund it too as well? Because again, you're going to have to still refund it at some point. And again, some of it might be FEMA money or insurance proceeds, but generally, there's, there's still funds, or there's still repairs that aren't covered by either of those.
I don't know, I just think that emergency and disaster doesn't necessarily have to mean hurricane. It could mean, it could mean anything.
But we just call it as a different name.
So would, so would you be in favor of creating a separate one, or just changing the name?
That's kind of what I'm saying. I, it's, my only concern is, is that, and in Charlotte County, I think, is dealing with this too. You're waiting for years and years and years before you get any FEMA money, knowing that you've got money there. And I think, I think the taxpayers would appreciate it if we got some of these things done. But we don't, we always say, well, we don't have the money, or we're waiting for FEMA, or we're, so we set aside all this money and we don't use it. And I just think it would be more beneficial if we had, instead of special use fund, an emergency and disaster. I'm not saying take all the money from the special use fund, I'm saying there should be a separate emergency and disaster reserve.
Or part of the special use fund, we could designate a certain percentage that is specifically just for emergency and disaster, if you'd like.
I think that would be better.
Yeah, I'm all for that, it doesn't, yeah.
Do you have a certain percentage you want to keep in there? And when I say percentage, again, that fund might fluctuate, so, because depending on how we're using it, you know, so, and again, it can always be changed at any time, and council makes that decision.
And we don't know how much is in there, but a percentage is a percentage, so.
Yes. I mean, would you like sixty percent?
As you say, what would you recommend?
I'm thinking at least sixty percent, if not more. Maybe sixty to seventy-five percent would be for the emergency stuff. But again, if you, if you feel like maybe that's too much because we do have other capital needs, maybe fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty sounds.
Start, we can start at fifty.
Start at fifty-fifty, and we can always look and see.
Okay. Yep.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. Any other ones you wanted to talk about? Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks for your all that work.
Public parking.
Good afternoon, Carl Benj, Urban Design, for the record. Okay, so today we're going to talk, show you the study area that we had for parking area downtown. We're going to discuss parking in the downtown Punta Gorda area. We're going to talk about public and private parking within the city, what other municipalities are doing in regards to parking, and parking possibilities in the future. So this is the parking study area that we used. Its boundaries to the west was Harvey Street. Boundaries to the east, Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. To the south, East and West Virginia Avenue, and to the north, the harbor itself. The area makes up approximately point two seven square miles. Here is an outline of the public and private parking within the city. The overview shows that there's approximately twenty-five hundred and ninety-two parking spaces throughout the city, with a hundred and fourteen handicap spaces. Around forty-four percent of the parking spaces, which is about eleven hundred and forty-eight parking spaces within the city, are located on private property. So this leaves around fifty-six percent of public parking, or of parking within a downtown area on a public parking. These figures also include the street parking, which we couldn't map out on the thing, but the street parking is also, on-street parking is also included. So when we talk about parking in the downtown area, it is important to remember that there is a centrally placed parking garage with two-hundred-and-eighty-eight parking spaces and twelve handicapped parking spaces for free parking that is highly underutilized. And talking about what other municipalities are doing with parking, for the most part, municipalities provide a mixture of both paid and free parking. Venice, which is similar to a size, similar to the size that we are, actually does free parking. The city of Fort Myers charges for parking in downtown lots and garages, although on-street parking is free after 5:00 PM. The city of Sarasota does metered on-street parking in city-owned parking garages. However, the first hour is free, and they have free Sundays and week, and holidays. And then the city of Fort Lauderdale provides paid parking areas, but they offer the residents a discount program for the parking fees, which we thought was kind of interesting. When we talk about parking fees, we're also talking about parking collections and parking enforcement. Who's collecting the money? Who's making sure everyone parking paid? Will that be an existing department who does the collection enforcement? How will this fit into the existing duties and responsibilities? And will the existing staff be able to take the additional duties, or will new staff be needed? Or do we create a new parking department for parking fee collections and enforcement? Will this be the new department's only duties, or will they be given more? And how many people will it take to successfully operate this new department? Either way, a cost benefit will need to be done to determine the feasibility of parking fee collection and enforcement within the downtown Punta Gorda area. The city has been approached by a third-party valet business to facilitate the option of valet. However, the city would need to send the proposal out to bid to see if there are any other willing vendors, if this option was to move forward through procurement. Number two, we can do zoning changes to the land development regulations that would make, that would be approved by city council that would allow public parking in the downtown area. However, if this is done, staff would highly recommend that there be landscaping criteria added to make sure that it complies and works with the surrounding properties that it'll be with. And then number three is putting wayfinding signs that could be used to find better parking throughout the city. Staff understands this practice was done before, but however, due to recent storm damages, we don't have it, but this could be an easy fix to kind of highlight parked areas in the city. So some considerations. The parking problem downtown area does not seem to be the amount of parking, but the locations of parking. Some of the more popular locations downtown do not have parking in their immediate area that satisfies, satisfies the parking demand. And the city invested in a centrally-located parking garage to provide parking to the businesses that were not required to provide by code. Today, the city-built parking garage is often empty, and people are seeing parking illegally along undeveloped rightaways. So along with creating the use downtown, the city would need to start, if they wanted to start allowing parking lots downtown, parking agreements would need to be implemented to ensure the quality and standards are met, and these agreements would need to be reviewed and regulated by staff. And when it comes to collecting fees, once maintenance fees are collected for a particular service, there could be an increase in the perceived level of maintenance liability. There was an internal discussion with staff about this. Not everybody agrees that this would, this liability would increase. However, people react how people react. And essentially, if somebody is paying for parking, they're going to expect repairs and maintenance to be done more rapidly. And charging for parking could create a spotlight for maintenances and repairs. So for immediate considerations, staff's only immediate consideration would be to place signs like these on all public parking areas. This is already done at Harold Court, and we would just recommend that we do it on all public parking areas, just kind of as a heads up. So that's all staff has with you, but we're all ears, if you guys have anything to add. We're right here.
Janine, pull for the record. So, so we know that the Harold Court garage is underutilized. Has there ever been any kind of a, I don't know, questionnaire or something that we could find out why, why our community isn't going for it? And I, I can guess, I think some of the reasons are this. Number one, there's difficulty maneuvering in there. You have someone coming down the ramp, and I have a larger vehicle, I have to stop for them, otherwise I cannot fit around, so two cars cannot fit around those. So it's never been really an easy place to maneuver. Also, you know, you can get turned around in there, it's a little confusing, once you park your car, and then you, you find the elevator, sometimes the elevator isn't working. I think people, especially in our older community, depend on that. They don't want to drive up there, park, and then find out, oh, gosh, now I have to go down the steps. So I think there are a lot of reasons why people don't use the parking garage. I like it in the summer especially because it's shaded, and it's cool. But like I said, you can't always depend on that elevator working, and I'm grateful my legs still work. So, so those are, I think, some of the issues that maybe we need to understand with parking garages. And, you know, I know people sometimes say, oh, we want, we want to put in another parking garage. I really don't think we'll ever have a community that utilizes them because of our, our over sixty-five, and, and they're, they're just not as convenient as people think they are. Just my thoughts.
I agree with you, and the other thing that, you know, when, I think if we do another parking garage, there should be one way in and one way out, you know, so that you're not trying to cross over with each other. And, and I agree with you, I've heard people say they're not going there because they're not sure if the elevator is working or not, or it's too dark, or they just don't like the look of it. But I think the biggest thing is just, like you said, trying to maneuver around, especially with big vehicles. I know I'm not as good at driving as Janine is with one of those big vehicles, but, you know, it is scary, especially now since we do have larger vehicles going in there.
Would the council be interested in reconfiguring the layout, if we could, if that's a possibility? If that would open up?
I still think there's only one way in and one way out. So I don't.
Providing options to widen the turn, so maybe if that took out, removing some parking spots to allow a little more. Would that be something that would interest?
If that's a possibility, that would absolutely be a good thing to do. I know that there were areas, or are there still areas for motorcycles, which kind of give you a little break there before you turn. But like I said, if someone's coming down that ramp, and they're turning on the turn, and you're trying to go up the ramp, you cannot both fit there with all the cars, um, that are parked. So, it is an issue. Just my two cents.
If you're thinking about trying to back out or anything, it, it does make it, um, a little bit more difficult.
I mean, it's a, it's a great structure, and if you figure out how to utilize it, I think it would be beneficial to everybody.
That's absolutely true. I mean, I've heard people talk about, you know, maybe we should, we should have had parking on the bottom. I guess it's too late for that, but parking on the bottom would have been nice, and then the stores up, up top, which would have protected them from the flooding, but hindsight's twenty-twenty.
Could it, could there be a sign that's even lit that says elevator working? Because that might change people's attitude about going in there.
When's the last time an elevator broke down?
I think it was down a couple months ago, but from my understanding, it's, it's, um, back, back up.
For good.
Never, never say for good, but, um, they did replace a majority of all of the circuit boards within the elevator. So, back on wood somewhere. We, yes, we should, we should be on solid ground for a while, but there is, there are instances when the elevator is down for maintenance and things like that. So, in that case, a sign might really be helpful.
It could just be a sign with the flashing, the lights around, you know, it doesn't have to be too fancy, but just notification. Oh, speaking of notifications, are you suggesting we have to have that sign about parkage risk on every street? Or what do you mean by public parking?
Uh, just entry into the public area, so we have a couple of public parking areas, and maybe just having them as you go in there.
I think like we're, I think where he's talking about is like when we go to the old city hall, you know, you've got Shorties, you've got Carmellos, and everybody using that spot.
Yes.
So have a sign there, I think it would be important, because it is a highly-used area.
Yeah.
Yeah, not for on-street parking, we wouldn't use it for that.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Lescovitz, does that mitigate our risk at all?
Absolutely.
Good. If it does, then I'm okay, because it is ugly.
We have one, a, a better-looking one that is at, uh, Harold Court now, so we try to utilize the better-looking one.
And to bring up something else, uh, Janine Polk, for the record, the zoning changes that you were discussing, allow parking as a primary use in the downtown area. I do think that we need to allow for that if a property owner agrees to it. I, I, I really do, and again, because people don't like to use a parking garage, they would rather pull up as close as they can and on the same level, and not have to go down any steps. But I think that, um, you know, with the lack of parking, although it says that we have a lot of parking, but it's not convenient to where we need to be located to the downtown. So, I do think that in the zoning changes, um, we're going to need to be talking about that, discussing it.
Are, are you saying that, um, like, a landowner allows somebody else to park on it and utilize that space? Because that would be like a contract with them?
I am, or I'm, I'm thinking, let's say, a property owner doesn't have any parking in the downtown, which a lot of people have that situation going on, and they purchase another piece of property that, um, they are going to utilize as a parking lot. I think that should be allowed, because they don't have parking. So he owns both those properties, they should be able to use it as parking for either employees, to, to protect their employees off the street, um, so that's what I'm talking about.
Where would that be?
So, my understanding is currently parking is allowed as a use downtown, but it's a special condition. We're talking about allowing it as a primary use on its own, um, not in relation to another primary use.
Right, right, like a paid parking area.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, no, and where I think, Janine, you're talking about is, you know, businesses that need extra parking. So, okay.
We do have that situation coming up, so I would like to discuss that, but I don't want to do anything that we're, shouldn't be discussing now.
If, uh, if there was designated parking, I would assume the, the landowner would be able to charge for that.
Yeah, it would, we would be out of that, it would be how, you know, if you're willing to pay however much you're willing to pay to park, that's on you. We would just want it to have strict, uh, landscaping and design criteria to make sure that it fits well within the city.
And that can be a case-by-case with somebody coming forward to ask for that. So I, from what I'm understanding, is yes, for sign may be making it a little bit prettier, you know? And then consider, can we make the parking spaces a little bit easier so we can maneuver better around Harold Court?
We'll have to see, um, I don't know, when it comes to redesigning the structure, it was designed for a certain, you know, amount of cards.
That's right.
Payload and all that. So we'll have to see if, uh, reducing those numbers will work in our favor and allow redesigning, or if it would, uh, cause an issue. If it causes an issue, we wouldn't be able to look into it, but we can definitely look into see where we can go with that angle.
And you said a sign in case of elevators now? Anything else?
All right, well, thank you very much.
Boards and committees, Sarah.
Good afternoon, City Council, City Clerk Sarah Waltz, for the record. The first board and committee item on the agenda is not actually mine. Was someone intending to speak on that?
Coastal Heartland?
The appointments to those. Thank you.
I'm pulling it up.
Good afternoon, Rick Limco, Urban Design. So this, um, the title of this is Coastal Heartland National Estuary Partnership Technical Advisory Committee Designee. And so, the recommended, uh, action is to appoint a new designee for the, uh, the Technical Advisory Committee. And so, in summary, the city of Punta Gorda and Urban Design currently does not have a designated representative on the Coastal Heartland National Estuary Partnership Technical Advisory Committee. This appointment supports city policy to support the recommendations of the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan. The city's designee to the TAC will be responsible for attending committee meetings and gathering information on regional scientific research, restoration efforts, and resource management initiatives. And I could continue on with that, but if you say no, then that's fine. The city, um, the, uh, the Urban Design Department recommends Daniella Caraschillo, Planner One, for this appointment. Her professional experience with land development regulations, sponge city initiatives, and landscape design, along with her academic background in environmental urban design, make her well-qualified to represent the city on the Chinep Technical Advisory Committee.
Sounds like a good recommendation. Can you, uh, any idea what, how much time it would take out of her work schedule?
Uh, they, they meet, um, quarterly, so four times a year, uh, up at the, um, Centennial Complex, up there by the, um, the, the baseball fields. Northern part of county. And then, so what needs to be done about?
Either consensus or a motion.
And so I just need a consensus or a motion to make Daniella Caraschillo the TAC designee.
I'll also move for that. Second, Dan.
Second, Dan.
Okay, motion a second in favor of Daniella.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, Daniella is it?
And then, so next, we have, um, a backup designee. And so what ended up happening last year, we, um, we only had one designee, the, the primary, which was Brittany. So, we'd like to have a backup designee for the exact same position. And so, the, um, instead of reading the whole, um, thing, I'm just going to say, the Urban Design Department recommends Andrea, Adriana Gerke for this appointment as backup designee for the Technical Advisory Committee, um, for Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership. Her professional experience includes planning and zoning, along with her academic background in urban design and sustainability. Her, um, all of this makes her very well-qualified to represent the city on the Chinep Technical Advisory Committee as a backup designee. And, once again, we just need, um, consensus.
Motion to approve Andrea for the backup.
All right.
Motion is second? Okay, second? Uh, in favor of Adriana, is that right?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you want me to do the last one?
Is it okay if, uh, we go ahead and leverage?
Boyd, at the bottom, Coastland?
Yep.
Yes.
And then, so, once again, we have one more, and this is for Boyd Lawrence, our planning director. And so, um, the title of this is Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership Management Committee Designee. And so this is a different, um, committee, if you will, um, this is for managers in the, uh, in, in the county. Appointment of Chinep Management Committee Designee. The city of Punta Gorda currently does not have a designated representative on the Chinep Management Committee. The appointment supports the city policy to support the recommendations of the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership Conservation, a comprehensive conservation and management plan, and the city of Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan for 2045. The city's designee to the management committee will be responsible for attending committee meetings and gathering information on regional scientific research, restoration efforts, and resource management initiatives relevant to the Punta Gorda and, uh, surrounding region. The city manager recommends Boyd Lawrence, Urban Design Director, for this appointment. His professional experience with planning and capital projects, along with his academic background in public administration, make him well-qualified to represent the city on the Chinep Management Committee. And so, once again, this is a committee, um, position, so just need consensus.
I move to appoint Boyd.
Second.
We have a motion a second for Boyd to be the management committee, in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Thanks, Boyd.
Thank you very much, council, for that. So now, under announcement of vacancies, we have one alternate seat on the code enforcement board.
We need boards and committees.
For Boyd's services for us?
Oh. Okay, we can do that one first, I'm sorry. So, City Council Service Boards and Committees, uh, everyone received a document explaining what each committee does, as everyone has gone through this previously, I know you're all, already somewhat familiar with it. So, um, we just need council to make a decision on who will represent the city for each of the service boards. Um, the first one up is Charlotte County Airport Authority, this is a liaison position.
Janine, are you on that? I've, I've been on it.
I was gonna say, if you probably can make this easier, is there anybody that wants to change a board?
That's what I suggest.
Or is everybody satisfied with what we're serving on?
I'm satisfied with my positions.
Can we just go through and say who's on what? I, I tried to write down it, but I wasn't sure who's on what. So if you just mention it, and then we say yes, we'll take it again, so it might be the easiest way?
Uh, last year, Janine was appointed.
And then I was on that for his council?
Yep.
I intend to be involved in that this year.
I'm on Charlotte Harbor Environmental Center.
Then on the Policy Committee, we had Janine on that as well, for the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Program. But that was then.
I'll take that one.
Does anybody else?
Yeah, I'll take that one.
Okay, that would be great. With the MPO Board and the Airport Authority, it's quite a bit. Okay, thank you.
Um, on the Community Action Agency Advisory Board, we had Melissa.
Yes.
Drug-Free Punta Gorda was, uh.
Rotating.
Yep, rotating. The MPO, we have Debbie and Janine?
No, Janine is the.
Just me.
Just you, okay, I'm sorry.
You want to keep that, Janine?
Yes. For the Punta Gorda Housing Authority, we have Melissa.
Yes.
For the Southwest Florida League Cities, we have Greg.
Yep.
Not more than one person can go to those, though, can they?
That's correct.
Yep.
Just don't talk about city business together while you're there. For the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, we have this one down as a rotating basis as well.
You know what, I'll take that one if I go off tourist.
Okay, so that was the next one we were coming to. We have two representatives for the Tourist Development Council, you being one of them, and Janice being the other.
So, somebody want to take my spot in tourist?
I'll take tourist.
Okay.
Did you want to remain on that one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
She's a good one for that. I'm just thinking if, you know, we need somebody more, um, to be more, um, involved in the Southwest Florida Regional. That might be.
Okay. Thank you very much, that was probably the easiest that item's ever been.
We like what we're doing.
I do. So then, under announcement of vacancies, we have one alternate seat on the code enforcement board. Then we come to nominations. We have two regular seats on the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee. First, I'm going to ask that council go ahead and nominate all interested parties, and then later down, we have a voting sheet for those. Do we have nominations for Lee Brant, William Drummond, and Donald Sedbury?
May I ask a question? It was brought to my attention from a, a member on the BSI Board of Canal Maintenance, that I don't believe PGI or BSI has an alternate, and they asked if that's something that can be?
That is something that's in the works right now.
It is, good, okay, that was our question, thank you.
So if that's in the works, would we kind of let the third person who didn't make it?
We could let them know that we would have that opening available for them if they'd be willing to serve that.
That'd be awesome, okay.
So, somebody want to nominate all three? Lee Brant, William Drummond, and Donald.
We're voting, right?
Sedbury.
Uh, not yet.
Oh.
Voting is coming up.
Okay, I'll nominate all three.
Okay, thank you. And then also, under nominations, we have one seat for a regular position on the code enforcement board. Eric Gentry has expressed an interest in and is eligible for appointment. Would council like to nominate and appoint him at this time?
I'll nominate and appoint.
Are you seconding that?
Eric Gentry.
Okay. So we've got a.
So do we?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Getting tired.
Yeah, I can tell.
So next up, we have appointments. For the Building Board, we have one contractor's seat up. Um, we do have three people who are interested. Daryl Gadsden and Garrett Kaiser currently serve on the Building Board and are eligible for reappointment. Garrett introduced himself earlier, he is serving as the chair. Kathy Kemeni has also expressed an interest in and is eligible for appointment to the board. If you could use the voting sheet to select one nominee for appointment, I'll collect those and tally the results.
Was it, um, Mr. Gadsden on there as well?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to hear voting.
Oh, I have, I'm on him.
We do have Burnt Store Isles, we not voting?
We're doing that one next.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just confused. Third Thursday.
Daryl Gadsden received the majority of votes and is reappointed to the board. Next up, we have, uh, the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We have the two regular seats available. If you could, on your voting sheet, vote for two, and then we'll let the third person know who doesn't receive the majority.
Perfect.
Lee Brant and William Drummond received the majority of votes, so they are appointed to the Burnt Store Isles Canal, Canal Advisory Committee, and we'll let Donald know that we do have the opening coming up for the alternate position. Would it be okay if I go ahead and? Would it be okay if I go ahead and make a quick comment?
Yeah, maybe we can change that on our agendas, because always have the city clerk first.
I just wanted to say thank you very much. I've really had a wonderful time serving, Council. Thank you, Tim. To date, and I look forward to continuing to do so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. You're a great job, and I appreciate it.
I wanna thank City Council for your generous donations for the Employee Appreciation Movie Night. That was a very fun experience, a great night. I'd also think, like to thank Odalis and Ashley in my office and IT for all their support and organizing and getting that event together. And that's all I have for today.
Awesome. Steve?
I have nothing major to advise you guys of, I guess that's a good thing. RJ Gorman is supposed to have their documentations to us, or our request for production of documents from them by December fifth. So, we're still kind of in a limbo period with them. But outside of that, Legal Department is moving smoothly right now.
Awesome.
Yeah, two things. Number one, I think that going back to Harrow Court, now that we're out of hurricane season, I'm sure it's probably in the works, Dr. Reichert, so you can probably just say you're already on it, but it's a good time to start establishing those protocols, and I think it needs to be written down for the tenants of the building of, you know, and this is probably, you know, Fire Chief and Police Chief all have to get involved, but, you know, when would the tiger dams go up? When would they come down? The floodgates. I'm hearing the floodgates aren't fixed, I don't know that to be true, but just wanna put that out there, I think it's a great time now to do it, give it to the tenants, and then they're ready.
Yes, it's all already in the works, and we will also, any new leases that are issued for that building will be drafted by both Odalis and Dr. Luskovich to make sure they are in full compliance and meet the needs that City Council feels that needs to be in there at this point in time. He will be reviewing all of those, and we will make sure we are on solid ground in the future.
And then finally, I'm truly grateful to the residents that voted for the opportunity to serve another two years in this wonderful city. It's a privilege to represent such a vibrant community, and I'm excited for what we're gonna accomplish together. So, thank you. That's all.
Janice?
When we were discussing the parking, the golf cart service idea, running around and getting people places, I think it's something we should consider. It's fun, they can have lights at Christmas, I mean, people have brought it up a number of times, and I think it's something we could talk about at some point. And then also, can we consider a waterfront advisory committee? Not just Marina, obviously Marina's a central piece, but there's a lot of mariners, people who've owned boats, owned docks, built docks in our community, they have businesses that are waterfront oriented, and I don't expect that our Public Works should understand or know all that's involved in, like, not having a ding dock means there's no point in anchoring here, you know? So, it's, there's so many factors, and so I just think it's something we could look into, and I'd like to figure out how to discuss that and consider making that happen. Maybe just five people, and I don't, I don't know, but that's something I'd like to...
So, you're asking for a consensus for us to do that?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay, so consensus is yes. Anything else?
Well, that's it. Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to report out on my involvement in the Utilities, Natural Resources, and Public Works Legislative Committee. These first, this first page contains six items that we've discussed as a committee, and the first one being Enterprise Fund transfers. When I first saw that, I thought, with the situation with our utilities infrastructure, we don't need to be transferring anything out of that Enterprise Fund. It all needs to go back towards maintaining the infrastructure. However, I spoke to Tom Spencer, and he said that he has an agreement with Public Works that when they repair water mains or whatever, then Public Works comes in and puts the sod back down. So, there would be a need to transfer a small amount. So, this is one of the ones that our committee agreed to, that we're going to advocate in favor of. And then the second one is the, it's called extraterritorial surcharges, but it's the 25% surcharge that we charge people outside of the city limits but within our water service area. There is a legislator that wants to eliminate that, which then puts the burden on the rest of the city, the residents, to, that we might have to increase rates. So, we're gonna fight against that one. And then the third one is One Water, and currently, water is being managed into separate silos, various water uses, and this is to bring it all together so that it enhances integration between the different water systems and maintaining local flexibility. That was a resounding idea of the committee, is that we don't want to relinquish any of our home rule to the state. And that's where these next three get into Stormwater Management and Accountability. It was looking to have a statewide oversight of that, and we just voted against that and deemed it to be more of a code enforcement matter. And then statewide rules on stormwater monitoring, same thing. We turned it down in favor of home rule. And then the last one is statewide rules on tree mitigation. There was just one municipality that wanted to do another statewide policy on that, and again, we turned it down in favor of home rule. The second page are the items that the other four committees discussed, and I hope to get more detail about what they ended up voting in favor of or against at the Legislative Conference coming up in the first week of December. But I am aware of, like, the last one, the Municipal Operations Committee and Sovereign Immunity. Currently, there's a level of insurance that exists, and there's a legislator that wants to increase that tremendously, which would put a big burden on taxpayers. If we get sued successfully, and then we would have to pay out these higher amounts, so I know they're fighting that one. But, and we know that there's eight bills in the process for variations on how they're gonna eliminate property taxes, and the only thing I know about that is that they're doing it differently this year. Normally, an implementation bill goes with each bill as they go through the process, and they're going to wait until the election and see how it all falls out, and then figure out how to implement it, which sounds crazy to me. But I owe you more information about the rest of those topics.
Is that it then?
Yep.
Thank you. Janine Polk, for the record, so I just have a couple of minor things. Thank you, first of all, for voting me in as Assistant to the Mayor. So, you all have seen some changes taking place on the parking at U.S.A., which I'm very grateful for. We talked about impervious areas, needing to be rid of some impervious areas that are not supposed to be used as parking specifically, and I think it's going to look really pretty once they put down the grass, and people won't be as, you know, oh, look at that empty lot, and I think that it's actually going to be better for our city in the long run. I also wanted to discuss and ask about, are we planning on using a leasing agent for the Harrow Court Center? I think it's time we get somebody who can really put it out there, put it on LoopNet, list it. You never know, there might be a business from out of our city that would be very interested in those spots, and I think it's at a very fair rate, it has always been. So, it's important that we get it out there and have it listed with someone, I think. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Should we put it on the agenda? Would you like consensus?
I think we need to put it on the agenda, discuss it.
I just wanted to, if you wanted to go via consensus, we would start moving forward with that. That, again, will have a procurement process with it, so if you're good with it on consensus, it can start the process faster.
Thing that we have to remember is how much is it gonna cost the city when, on Harrow Court, which we're already losing money on, so that's one of our...
Well, this would be just a listing agent, so they would only list it. They wouldn't, they wouldn't take...
Presenting or anything?
Yeah, yes.
Sounds like an agenda item, so we can hash it out.
It is a commercial piece of property. I mean, you don't wanna have signs out there that say, you know, "For lease."
That's worked in the past. It doesn't cost as much money, but, no, I appreciate the idea and the support of a listing agent, at the very least, as a kind of a first step in maybe moving towards property management for the facility.
Yes, we have...
Otherwise, it falls on your shoulders as far as showing it and all that, and I just don't know that you have that kinda time. And again, if you give it to a listing agent, they will put it out everywhere so that everyone in Southwest Florida can see it.
Right, and we do have the three spaces available at this time, so that's fairly unique for us.
Well, and perhaps we can raise the rates to cover that. I mean, if we're really getting that much exposure, we may be able to raise the rates a little bit, just to cover that cost. Something to think about again.
Anything else, Janine?
That you do it.
So, for me, I would love for us, I see all the stuff that we're doing with the budget, but I would love for us to see quarterly reports, to see how we're doing each quarter, to make sure that we're staying on top of things, we're finding the finances, you know, what are we gonna have to tweak? I think that's really important. But I also think it's important, Kristen, I'm not sure if you want new software, but, you know, I see that you're going from one area to another area, and I think that we need to try to find some money, if we have a consensus, to try to find some money for better software for her, so it's easier for her. She has so much, she's got the whole city with the finances, and if you have consensus, I'd love to see if there's anything we can do for you for that. Yes, that's my idea. You can buy me lunch later.
I think, you know, that's like, considered a new ERP system, is what it's called, you know, so obviously, we would be open to that. It does take time, just as you know, to implement a new system, so while you're transitioning, but, yeah, we're definitely open for that.
So, is that consensus that we can do that?
I think we should look into it.
To look into it.
Yes, we'll look into it, and it can be expensive, but a lot of them are, you know, you can do it over a five-year term or something like that.
Right, and when you look at labor and cost, and how much time it takes a person to do something versus a software that might be a little bit expensive in the beginning to actually, you know, do cost benefit.
So, again, we'll look at estimates so that we can bring it to you during our, as we develop our new budget.
Perfect. Now, Steve, are you gonna be bringing leases to us at any time soon? You know, like, what do you see with the leases?
Oh, leases, I thought, like, Lisa, ooh.
Lea.
Leases, yes, yes, we are still going through those.
Okay, are we gonna do a workshop, or just have it on the agenda, or you're just gonna give it to us?
Which way I'm directed to do it.
I'd like to see it on the agenda.
We'd like to see it first.
Okay.
Agenda, yeah.
Like, for example, Mayor, these Harrow Court leases, some of them have default provisions if a tenant wants to break it or terminate it. Some didn't have them, you know, so we're gonna be tidying all those up for tenants moving down the road.
Well, the other one, I, you know, and I don't know if there's anything we can do with it, but like, the bank that's over here is what, on a 50-year, whatever year lease, and it's a fixed income, you know, and we don't see any improvements, and this valuable piece of property, looking at it, you know, what are we gonna do with it? It's no deal, so, yeah. So, looking at all of our leases that we have. I would also ask for consensus for us to find resources. I know Public Works gets overwhelmed and stuff, but I've had a lot of residents saying that going over the bridges from here all the way down to Ponce Park, the bridges, the lights have not worked, and it's pretty scary at nighttime, you don't know, because you're going over the bridge, to see if we can get the resources to get our lighting on the bridges fixed. I think they may even have to be replaced, is that what you said, Ron? Yeah, so it's decorative lighting on there, but they've been out since then, on the two bridges.
Ron Everest Public Works, just along that lines, resources are internal, so we're using those as much as we can to keep budgets in check. So, we could contract it out, but we'd be spending a tremendous amount of money on things that we can do ourselves. So, throughout the parks, our people are standing up poles, and our electricians are coming back behind, and getting all the wiring and everything, getting it hooked up. On the bridge in particular, we, it takes approximately six people, because we have to set up MOT, bring in a bucket truck, and we have to shut down a lane, and it's just a little more complex than some of the other areas. We've got people spread pretty thin across the city trying to accomplish a lot of things, but that is on our list to do, and it will be done as soon as we get our resources there.
It'd be really good if you're closing out the street, to do it at the same time you're doing the speed.
It's a different location.
This might be too simplistic, but they have pretty good solar lights that you could beam onto the road, you know, in the meantime, for $29, you know?
Yeah, something, because it's dark.
I don't know, it's just...
It's been since then.
Something to think about.
That's awesome, and I was gonna say, thank you also for getting some of the Christmas lights put up on this side of 41, which is really nice, because I think the businesses really appreciate that, because they feel like they've been left out. And I know it's really difficult with bids, but I personally would like to have more than one bid presented to us, so I don't know if we can have any kinda consensus, I don't know how, but until we get two good bids to choose from, I know Marine Contracting Group might be a difficult one, but some of them are, but hopefully with our procurement and trying to figure out our policies, we'll get more than one bid coming in for us, because it feels like we're being strong-armed just to take that one bid, because there's nothing else out there, so that was my...
Just for clarification, in the situation where only one bid comes in, procurement will rebid that item, they will rebid it multiple times until they have met a certain threshold of how many times that they've put it out and still gotten one response. So, it isn't just that, we bring you, we get one bid, and we say, oh, that's gonna be the one that we're gonna take.
Right, but we have two, like, Marine Contract had two, and you threw one out, so it was just one. And so, I didn't know if we'd go up for rebid, because it's still one bid.
Right, but it had been rebid already. That was the second time that it had gone up.
So, it happened, first time it marched, and then it went up just recently.
Procurement process.
Yeah, it's a tough process, and it's...
And as a part of that procurement evaluation, we will include some council education too as well, so that you can feel comfortable in our procurement policies as well, and procedures.
Awesome. I think that's it.
I have one, I have one more thing, and I just wanna add it real quickly. I spoke to a lot of people during Halloween, and one of the people that came from Venice, I said, oh, you came from Venice, why are you here in Punta Gorda? And she had several little children with her, and she said, this is the only city that closes off their streets, and I feel safe here with my children. So, thank you so much to the police, that is really, really appreciated, and from what I understand, that's what draws people here, and we need to keep doing it. Thank you.
I do wanna say thank you again for renominating me to, for this position. Appreciate it.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I wanna share a couple things that are very important for all of you to hear. In seven and a half years, do you know what all my studies, all of my field work, all of my legislative work, do you know what I've learned that is happening with the water in Florida? It is declining. Do you know in the seven and a half years that I have been the Citizen Waters are, do you wanna know? Have we ever, have I ever seen one government official, legislative, senator, congressman, congresswoman, lift their finger to help save this Peace River? And the answer is no. And I'm gonna ask all five of you, this is our home, nobody, nobody is going to help us save the Peace River. We are going to have to do it together. Now, I know Janet, CNEP. CNEP, they've done a great job at what they do, but what they don't do is what I do, and what I'm going to get all of you, hopefully, to do. what I'm going to get all of you, hopefully, to do, which is to work in concert together. It's going to get very uncomfortable for every one of you, because it got very uncomfortable for me. I mean, you have no idea when you have a senator ostracizing you for four minutes in your local community, and you're a speaker on the legislative delegation agenda. We, together, they treat our harbor as a twailing. This NPDES permit that I've been talking to you all about, issued by FDEP, is, it's not good anymore. And Senator Albritton has told me that they're trying to outpace it in 10 years from today, let's say. That's Mosaic's timeline to finish all of the phosphate mining. I want you to know that they're building more outfalls. They're getting ready and hardy to ask and request for more acreage for the overlay map.
Thank you, Tim.
Please, we need to start meeting individually.
Tim, thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy O'Hara, can you please change the public comment in the beginning of your council meetings to four minutes instead of three? It's just not long enough. I had to sit here for, what, a five-hour meeting today in order to come back up to finish one little thing I wanted to say earlier on? The county commission allows five minutes. The Bayfront Center, are we going forward with a pavilion there? That's a waste of money. We don't need another pavilion. We have plenty of pavilions in the park. It's a total waste of money. Do nothing with that. I'd rather see you do nothing with that piece of property. Anybody that has any common sense in investing in real estate is going to say, "What are you doing? Leave it. Leave it grass. Don't spend any money. No bench, no landscape. Just leave it sit there until we can put a building in, a picture-skew building with a beautiful harbor front view." This is a huge investment for the people that have properties, especially in PGI. And I'll guarantee you, if I go around, what do I have to do to stop the pavilion? Or a tiki, or whatever you're planning on doing, because I'm not sure where you're even at? What do I have to do? Do I have to go around and get a petition? I'll do whatever it takes to stop it. I've talked to builders, I brought a very good builder out there to the site, we hung out, and I mean, he was just like, he builds all kinds of beautiful wow, built homes and so forth in this area. And it would be a sin and a waste of money, thrown in the trash can, to put anything there but a beautiful building, because we don't need a tiki, we don't need a pavilion there. We already have plenty. They're empty half the time. Why would you waste our taxpayer dollars by putting another tiki up? Just because you want to do something quick to make the problem go away, because it looks bad on you, because you haven't done something with the Bayfront Center that got destroyed in a storm? I mean, come on.
Hi, Jeff Lustig. Councilwoman Denne for bringing up golf carts. I've always, that's my big thing. You get two-for-one in a parking space. Any golf cart could easily get from the end of PGI through here. You'd save work on your roads from cars, and most people, since you do live in houses, can use that as a second car as a senior citizen. Ms. Polk, we do need professional management on the retail stores. You're put in an untenable position as a council person to be a hard ass on store retailers. And you can't, since everything's in sunshine, you can't make any decisions until months later. And that makes it very difficult for you guys. And then my other question was for the police chief. There have been a lot of programs about the flock cameras, and one of the main problems I had as a pawnbroker was that the police would, this is back in the 70s, so it has nothing to do with today, but they would come in and ask for the whereabouts, ask for the jewelry of a particular ploner, and would ask if this person had that. And they had no right legally. It would be like going to a bank without a subpoena or a warrant, excuse me, to look at the whereabouts. And I was just wondering, are the police now using, tracking individuals through the cameras and whatnot, like they're doing in Lee County? Carmine's very happy and impressed with his surveillance cameras. That's the first thing he shows people moving to Lee County. And I just, I find that very Orwellian, if that's what we're going to be doing. I don't think we're doing it here, but I just thought it's something to think about.
Anybody else? Yeah. Sorry.
Debbie Cootery, PGI. I was just wondering, couldn't our Building Department and our Public Works possibly capitalize on a new design for public parking? I mean, basically, we don't have to have ramps inside. We can cantilever them, or, you know, right on the outside of the building. We don't have to have them inside. Like, we could have them stacked, like we could have one going in, one going out. Basically, it would make it a lot easier to get around and maneuver, and you're not getting around anybody. Basically, it would be less liability for the city, which I think would be great. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, medevils adjourned. Thank you.